Okay, I'm unmuting. Sorry, we had a little bit of technical.
Somebody in the room zoomed in?
It's me.
Okay, good morning. We will call to order the January 18th, 2023 Trinity County Board of Supervisors meeting. Welcome. Supervisor Lutwiler will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Good morning. Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. Thank you, Chair. I would like first off to ask permission to read a written state from an individual who is unable to attend today and then make a little comment on my own. It'll probably all be under three minutes.
And let's, um, let's give three minutes for what you're going to read and three minutes for yourself in case you need a bit more.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is a letter from the Ebunushi Snyder at the Hyampom Animal Clinic. Um, they're having some trouble over there with the road, so I'm just going to give this a read. I'm uncomfortable reading. I'm better improvising. Um, dear ladies and gentlemen, we wanted to be there this morning, but unfortunately I got sick, and so we asked a friend of ours to read this to you. My name is Ushi Snyder, and my husband, Eby, and I are running the Hyampom Animal Clinic on Garrett Road in Hyampom. We are here this morning because last week, the county road, the only access to our clinic and several other properties got washed out by high waters at the South Fork of the Trinity River. Over the last several years, we've been contracting or contacting the Trinity County Road Department and urged them to do something about the river eroding closer and closer to the county road. Nothing ever happened. Now, since the road washed out, we again contacted the Trinity County Road Department and urged them to give us and our neighbors access to our properties and our clients' access to the animal clinic. Still, nothing happened. On Monday of this week, we had a, to build a detour with the help of a friend of ours so that our clients could get access to the clinic. If we had relied on Trinity County, our business would be closed. My husband and I have been running the Hyampom Animal Clinic for 11 years now. The business is our livelihood and a much-needed service to our community. We're not asking for a handout. All we're asking for is that Trinity County repair the road so that our, repair the county road so that our neighbors and ourselves can get access to our homes and our clients can get access to the clinic. All we ask for is Trinity County do its job. Thank you. Um, I am a regular client over there for the pet rescue. Um, we've got three foster dogs right now. Uh, they all need welfare checks, um, and all of those sorts of processes to clear through the adoption process. They can't even be adopted out, um, through the protocols of the association until we can get them through the vet. So, um, it's an urgent matter. It really, it's going to need to be addressed. Um, I have no other information on it, so that's it from, from the Schneiders. Thank you. Um, second, I wanted to say, you know, we're all looking forward to the, um, to the financial ad hoc report from the, for the cannabis ad hoc. I want to thank this chair for forming that committee. I think it's essential. We need the transparency. We need to dig into the background of this and figure out where the real problem lies. So that's all the comments to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment in the room? I have Keith on line.
Yes, this is Keith Groves up in Trinity Center. Uh, I'm requesting a, during your reports, a report out on the, uh, what the county is doing, uh, to help us out up here. Our phones have been out for coming on two weeks here. I think tomorrow, um, our businesses have, can't take credit cards. We can't, uh, people can't use EBT cards. And, uh, we haven't heard a thing from OES or the county on, on what's going on or what actions they're taking. Uh, the most significant issue that we have is Trinity Center has access to cell phones, but Coffee Creek does not. And so, uh, last weekend, we had a person with a cardiac, uh, issue that luckily the, the neighbors knew where they first responders lived and went to their house and roustied them out and got them going, uh, to get that, uh, person some service. So just trying to find out what, what's going on? What's the county doing? Is OES going to bring in a portable cell tower? Just, uh, that's what I'm requesting. Thank you for your time.
Um, thank you. Uh, we have OES in the room. Can we have a response to this?
Good morning, Board. Chairman Cox, Philip Seamy, Emergency Operations Manager, Trinity County OES. Um, I have been contacted by quite a few residents in the Coffee Creek and Trinity Center area regarding this outage that took place back on, I believe it was Wednesday, uh, January 4th. Um, and so I went ahead and reached out to our state representative for Cal OES, um, Mr. Goinech, and, uh, he has responded to me that he has escalated this up to the, uh, OES 911 branch of Cal OES and that, uh, the, the last response that I got was last night said that we have escalated this issue with TDS, and they are working to resolve the service outages. Additional details on the problem and resolutions will be provided by TDS State Government Affairs Manager as soon as possible. They've also, uh, contacted the California 911 branch. Um, my response to them was that there is Title 19, which is the Public Safety Text of Proposed Emergency Regulations. These are the regulations that TDS is supposed to be following. Uh, when they do have an outage, uh, there is, there's the response to the state. And so, um, I made sure that, uh, you know, that all of the information that I could gather from our residents was relayed back up to Cal OES. Um, it is in their hands. The last report that I got, they feel that originally their, uh, resolution was that they would have it up and running sometime in February. Now, the last report was that it should be running by Friday.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just want to, um, add to the list that the whole downriver community hasn't had landlines either for a significant amount of time. So it's an issue in Hawkins Bar, Salier, and up into the Burt Ranch area.
Okay, I believe is that, that's a frontier.
That's a frontier issue. So I don't know how, I don't, I, maybe you and I can talk about how to communicate with them, the need that our landlines work.
Okay, and yeah, so maybe that's another item that will escalate to, uh, to Cal OES.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. With that, we will close public comment and move into reports and announcements, reports from department heads.
Good morning, Panos Kokas, Director of Transportation. Uh, let's start with the public comment regarding the veterinary clinic, which located someplace way in the back based on this photograph. I'm not aware of any requests from the veterinarians to repair this road prior to this storm. Uh, they may have some, but I'm not aware of any. This photograph was taken, I believe, on January 9th. I can't see the, can we hide this one, Ashley? Right here. You can hide it. Oh, it's just, sorry, I can see it on the top. Uh, January 9th, we took this photograph, and we went to speak with the people who live beyond the road, telling them that we have a feeling based on the storms that this road is going to wash out. As we had more storms coming, and then there is something that's known as time of concentration for the water to reach certain places. What do we mean by that? As it rains, the water starts coming down the river, but some of it may be five, 10, 20 miles away, and it will take some time for that water to reach that point. And at that point, the water in the river is going to be much more than it is now with larger force. Well, my predictions came correct. I believe I sent you a picture like this, uh, before, on the 9th or soon after, telling you that this water we observed, and I have a feeling that the road is going to be gone soon. And at that time, we went, like I said, we spoke to the veterinarians and to the other person who lives close by, and we mentioned to them about the road. We also found out that field that's to the east of that road belongs to the veterinary clinic, and we asked them if we can put a temporary road or maybe a permanent road because this road does not exist. At that time, they told us by no means you cannot go in our property, but after the road, uh, was destroyed, they changed their mind and they sent us a letter yesterday. Let's go back to the slide to show you what has happened. Uh, here is, uh, let's use this tree as a reference point where I have the red arrow because we want to know what time can do. And here is on January 10th, the next day, as you can tell, the road, it's a lot closer to the river or vice versa. And then, of course, as we spoke about that time of concentration for the water to come at a certain location, well, that happened later on, and over the weekend, it washed out the road. The road is someplace down here, and it kept on going straight. If, if you go back to the first, uh, photograph, we'll find out, could you move up? We find out, here is a tree now, and let's, uh, let's see what it is now. Sorry. The tree was there on January 9th. Here is on January 17th. And the creek is going to be washing, and the river is going to be washing more and more in that side. The property owners have built a temporary road to go to their properties. We have a geotechnical engineer coming tomorrow to look at this field to find out what type of work has to be done in order for us to put a bypass. During our research about potential easements, where the easements are, because our maps, this road, uh, the location of it, it's in the west side of the airport. But as we're looking at the records, our easements for the road, they are in the east side of the airport, and they terminate at the property of the veterinarians. So far, we cannot find any easements in our records for that piece of property. However, we conducted the title company and we expect a title search to be completed soon to find out if there is an easement, and we do not have any records. Cal OES and FEMA will only pay for roads that are part of our existing easement. So there are some issues to work out, and I don't know how we're going to proceed. Other damage that we have, it's on the lower South Fork at mile, post mile 10.6, as you can tell, two different areas that have washed out. Even though the rains have stopped, the saturated ground may start giving out more and more, and we may not have a road. Uh, we don't have a road that's possible now. Some of the people I believe in this area knew about the damage. They moved some vehicles away from the damage so they can get in and out, but that cannot be sustained for a long time. And here is the Ruth Zinnia Road, two different locations, post mile 6.7, 7.7, a part of this area washed out, and we don't know how sturdy is the area where the cones are. So it'd be very difficult to say that this road is safe because we don't know what's happening. And like I said, a geotechnical engineer will be there tomorrow and Friday looking at those sites to see if the damage adjusted the surface level, or we could do some repairs, or if it goes farther down where requires more extensive repairs. The other location where we can see this asphalt upheaving, uh, again, there are some issues, and some of those, uh, rises between the asphalt there as much as a foot I was told, which is not very safe to have a car drive over. And here is Hyampom Road, uh, mile post 10.3, and we're looking at different locations. There is some washout through this area, and there is some cracks throughout the slope, which there are something that we have to watch out because the road may not be able to carry any substantial weights because that weight may induce a slide, and it's going to make it dangerous. And of course, uh, the latest about Canyon Creek is a photograph from January 14th, and as we can tell, the rock slide is still active, and there is a drill under the rocks that was left close to the rocks because it was safe. And again, this is an unpredictable slide. We don't know how it's going to act. We can only do so much. We have the rock exports. We signed a $4 million contract for them to complete it. So we're waiting to see what's going to happen. That's all I have about the storms.
When you have information back after the geotech folks come and look and advise, will you provide updates on the website, or how will people know kind of what decisions are being made?
Well, the geotechnical engineers' findings are going to be preliminary based on visual. Uh, they have a drone they can fly, but you can only see so much. You don't know what's going under the ground. You know more about it when you start taking it out. I can provide a report to the board of what the findings are, what we think is there, and we can proceed from there.
So my concern, and I appreciate the reports that you send very much, my concern is that if I forward those kinds of things out to my contact list, I know it isn't complete, and I want anyone from the public to be able to find out this information. So what is the best way for us to do that? Well, I do know that, uh, Department of Transportation has done a real good job updating their website with updated information. Um, and I'm, I'm sure they plan to do that and continue to do that.
What we don't like to do is put draft information that's going to be changed. People look at it as final. So anytime if something is drafted and it's not final, it's not a good idea to put it out because it's going to be 180-degree revision to what's there. People have certain expectations and preliminary reports, and then the follow-up reports may say exactly the opposite, and once we start digging, we may find something else. And, uh, that is the danger on, by all means, we can inform the public who are working on it and what we can do. However, those are large cost items. We're waiting for federal declaration of emergency so FEMA can participate. Uh, the good about, part about FEMA participating means that our local cost is going to be reduced drastically. Instead of being 25%, it would be close to 7%. However, the bad part about FEMA participating is they're going to delay the project by two, three years by requiring certain documents to go through, and of course, they're not the easiest people to deal with. Uh, we have damages through, since 2017 that are not repaired, uh, partially due to FEMA's, uh, losing papers or slow response and so forth. So we're trying to see what we can do to mitigate for that. And just heads up, I'm going to put an RFP out to have a consultant come aboard to manage all the FEMA projects and see what we can do moving forward because we do not have the capacity to do what we're supposed to do, let alone take care of all the past damage due to storms and fires.
Good to know. Thank you for that.
So, yeah, I do have a question, Panos. Just, I'm wondering, so will these folks, um, I guess, choose an area because all of those roads looked, uh, very, very badly damaged and, and not safe at all. So in the area with the veterinary clinic, uh, what is the expectation those folks could have of the soonest that something would be done besides the, the temporary road that the, the property owner created themselves?
Well, again, I don't know if we have an easement in that area and where the easement is. Looking at the existing road by the airport, it appears was the road that they use is an existing road that they used to use. The maps that they dedicate the easement to us, they're in the other side of the airport, away from the creek, so to speak. And they end at the property of the veterinarians, who are just north of the airport. And that's why we have the title report to find out if we do have an easement or not. Uh, if we do not have an easement, Cal OES and FEMA will not pay for any repairs. Uh, looking at that area will not, if, let's say you're supposed to repair it, we're not going to be able to fill in the creek or the river and make sure you can go through it. Uh, first, it's going to be very expensive, and second, the regulatory agencies will never allow us to do something like that. So the solution has to be to put a road as far away from that river so this does not happen again.
And so i- i- in a best-case scenario where the easement exists and it's in the perfect place, then how soon would something happen?
Sometime when we can get in to work on it because there are some other waterways that bringing water to the river farther up into the east. So this have to be, those have to be dried. We have to make sure we get approval from FEMA, Cal OES, that we can proceed with the project. Then we have to prepare plans, specs, estimates, make sure we obtain the easements to have a public road through that area, and that can take some years.
Years?
Yes. If I have to go to condemnation, if, let's say the property owner does not give us an easement and say, too bad, and I'm not going to give it to you, and we have to go to condemnation, that's going to add about 18 to 24 months in the process for us to get permission to put a road someplace, provided everything else is in place. But again, the biggest drawback or the biggest obstacle is going to be funding and the environmental documents. Designing the road and building it doesn't take too long, but acquiring the funding through the state and the federal government takes a long time. And of course, the environmental process also takes a long time.
And a clarification on, uh, funding would only be provided on an existing easement. So if we get an easement into an area that, uh, we didn't have before, and that's where we're going to put the road, does that mean they wouldn't put the funding there because the easement didn't exist before the damage happened?
If an easement does not exist on any road that was damaged, that means you're operating a road you did not have, uh, rights to it. So as far as they're concerned, it's non-existent.
So that would put all the funding requirements on the county?
Uh, yes, if we have to put a bypasser off.
Okay. And in all of these cases, the pictures you were showing us, it looks like we are talking months and years, not weeks and months.
Yes, and even if we had a funding right now, and the environmental documents are clear, uh, based on the situation of the storms and the water, the saturation of the soil, you can't start construction right now. You have to go when everything is dry, and because during construction, if we have another storm, the damage is going to be way worse.
Okay. Well, I guess, Lady, it seems like we need to work with OES and others and just say, how are we going to take care of folks that are stuck in these areas? Because that's, we know, we know what the concerns have been on Canyon Creek slide area, which has been going on for a while, but now we're talking even way longer for these. So I, I don't know where we go from there, but it sounds like we need a plan. Thanks.
Couple of questions about Canyon Creek. When we signed the contract for 4 million with dryer, it was for what we're looking at at that time. Now that it's gotten significantly worse, has the contract gone up and the timeframe gone up to get this thing completed in the fashion that they thought of, you know, we'll say a month and a half ago?
Uh, from a legal perspective, I don't believe so because they had a lump sum contract, and at that, that means it has to be done, a job has to be completed, has to be done. If it was broken down as time and materials, then it would be different because they reached certain time, they reached certain amount of materials they removed. Of course, they may have, uh, different opinions about it, but from the legal perspective, lump sum means I'm going to complete that work for this amount of money. It's not going to cost you anymore. Typically, when you go out to construction, we have unit prices. So have 2,000 feet of road, one bridge, and in the bridge itself, we say how many cubic yards of concrete, how many pounds of steel, and so forth. Everything is broken down. So that's by unit prices. So they bid on each unit, this much for concrete, this much for asphalt, this much for steel, and so forth. So if those quantities are exceeded, we pay them extra. If they're not exceeded, then we pay them less than the contract. We pay them for what they put on the ground. When you have a contract that's lump sum, that means that they're going to complete the whole project for that amount of money.
Are you still confident that the techniques they're going to use by drilling and shoring it up are going to work?
I don't know. That's not my expertise. I couldn't tell you one way or the other.
Thank you.
But I do have some questions. I know you mentioned that you don't know if the landowners, the vet, the veterinary clinic had actually filed a, or talked in the past about the issues that that road was going to wash out, but, uh, I know in my district, we just, what, last summer or had a similar issue fixed that had washed out in 2016. So it took five years. Um, that had been reported time and time and time again before it washed out. And my question is, can we learn from that and start to try to address the situation before it gets to that point? I know you have to deal with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, but there has to be a way that we can put in some riprap in the river before the road washes out and before, I don't know how environmentally it could be more damaging to throw three pieces of riprap in there than to send 14 acres of gravel down the river. So that's something I'd like to see in the future. I, they're very predictable. I mean, these events are, you can see that happening for years before the road finally washes out. And I'd like to see that we do something prior instead of waiting for the emergency.
Uh, you're absolutely correct. Ideally, it'd be to put some rock in it ahead of the time. However, if we wait after the storm for a certain period of time, we run into the environmental regulations, and we have every environmental agency from the Army Corps of Engineers, Department for Water Resources, Fish and Wildlife. The best way to handle that, it's within a week or two of the storm, if we have the money, you go and put in the rock in that area and you call it emergency repairs. And at that time, you only have to report it to the regulating agencies, regulatory agencies, rather than have to get permission from them. I've done that elsewhere. We had the damage. First thing we had to do was run and put a rock in it within the first two, three weeks after the storm, where we can get in, and then we inform them. If you wait a certain period of time because we don't have the funds or we can't get to them, then you run into the problem of you have to get permission. It's emergency. The other one is after the emergency.
And on Garrett Road right now, are you looking into doing that to stop what's happening there? Or are we going to wait until next year and see if maybe we can get permission to put riprap in? Because the way the river's pointing right there now, i- in three more years or one more big storm than their temporary road. in three more years or one more big storm than their temporary road around it's gone, plus however many acres of the neighbor's field gets washed down their river when all it would take is two dump truck loads of riprap to stop it. So that's, that's what I want to see is let's prevent future problems instead of waiting for another emergency and then more FEMA funding and then four more years or five more years of waiting to get a contractor in there to fix it. That's, that would be what I would.
On this side, because it's not a road and the road has completely washed out, there is nothing, if we put a riprap in that area, they're going to get after us and say, what road are you trying to defend? If the road is in place, it's, then we can prevent further damage to the road. In this case, the road has been damaged. And the worst part is that we may not have an easement in that area and then that ties our hands a little bit more.
Hello. Thank you for your time. One of the options that may be available, considering that the river is now cutting into what is privately owned, looks like a fenced in agricultural area is a program with the United States Department of Agriculture, NRCS. They have a program called the EWPP. And they're able to provide emergency funding immediately to fix sites to decrease the erosion on private agricultural lands. And so I'm more than happy to give you that information later and connect you with the person who we may be able to to figure something out because those funds come very rapidly and they are specifically for sites like this.
Well, that's great because so we have no funding available from the sources that I'm working with, but that would be something great to do. I don't know if it'd be DOT who has to apply for those, if it could be another department, OES, or somebody else that'd be more appropriate to apply for that because they are private properties rather than public and DOT is concentrating on the public roads, on public facilities.
Correct. So there is, there is some, some challenges there, but I, we've worked it out before. We put riprap in the river on the Trinity to save someone's house. So I think that, that that may be a potential option.
Well, that'd be a great option because we ran out of ideas and wanted to talk to Cal OES about it. And they said if there is no easement, they just can't move that to FEMA for repairs.
Okay.
But again, we don't know if there is one or not. That's why you conducted a title company to give us a title report. And the title report is going to tell us if there is something there. We looked at the records, but the records may be missing something. But the title companies have other facilities that they can look for what's there and what's not there.
Okay. And then I have one more comment that will lead to something further down. But I, you said that it was difficult to inform the public because you're concerned about their ability to recognize when something was a draft and they, they take it to heart and say, that's what you're going to do. Having been the person who was caught on the other side of the slide, no information really pushes you out and makes you feel like you're not in control of your own life. And they own those properties on the other side. So their property values are highly dependent on their accessibility to their homes. And so I, I kind of disagree a bit. I feel like letting the public know your decision-making process to the best of your capacity, it doesn't need to be in the weeds, but just really opening up the reason you're making decisions and how they're coming along and who you're employing in that decision-making process really puts people at ease. Because when they don't hear any information and they're told, oh, we'll let you know, you feel very trapped in that scenario and it makes you very uneasy and it creates bitterness. So I feel like transparency is, is the core to relationship building with our communities. And it's really important that even though it may seem like it's difficult, that we make sure the public knows how and why we're making some of the decisions that we are, so that they feel part of that and that they can speak into that process. And, and maybe they have ideas. We don't know. Because there are a lot of folks here who have retired from large positions and have knowledge that perhaps we don't have the knowledge to. And I would just encourage that to be something that we work towards.
Again, we can inform them where we're in the process, but getting in the weeds like giving them a draft report from geotechnical engineer or professional design.
And I don't think anybody wants that. I don't think anybody wants that. I think they just want to know.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Director Caucus, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Do we have any other department heads in the room? Any on, oh, we do.
Good morning. Chair Supervisors, Drew LeBoni, Environmental Compliance Specialist, Acting Division Director. Just some quick licensing updates. Over the last month or so with the holidays, you know, we've seen a downturn in the number of licenses that we're getting to the paper on the weekly. So currently, we've, we have four hundred and three appendixy documents that we've received. We have noticed a hundred and eleven and sixty-nine of them have been picked up and are active. I had a conversation yesterday with the principal from Helix. And I think we should be back on track to start seeing more review on the weekly going forward. I also intend to put out an RFQ or RFP for additional environmental consultants to enable us to continue on with that process. I think that's about it for me. So thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any department heads on Zoom? Okay. All right. Then our report from our CIO.
Okay. Good morning, Board. Madam Chair. As we're moving forward in implementing the strategic plan, I'd like to formally request the Board and the Chair to create an ad hoc committee so that we can incorporate, as, as you'll see in the agenda today, there is a placemaking plan requesting to formally adopt the placemaking plan. But it'd be nice to have an ad hoc committee so we can move forward with implementation. Okay, second item. I held a department heads meeting last week. And one of the items of discussion was we had a roundtable conversation with other department members to review our contract routing process. I shared this with you and the public because part of that county process involves procurements, purchasing authorities for department heads as well as the thresholds allowed based on county code. We will be continuing that conversation and developing a draft of updates for the Board to consider increasing the thresholds just based on how long those, those amounts have been determined in county code. I think it's time that we need to realize the cost of doing business is increasing and the amounts that are identified are not sufficient and to reduce the authority level to be more at the department level and the CIO level. On a note of good news, I wanted to share with the Board a little history of the opioid settlement that basically started back in 2017. I reached out to who, who at the time was our DA, Eric Haraford. Because I remember being at that board meeting back in 2017 where he presented to the Board a, an option for our county to participate in a lawsuit on the opioid settlement. And what's nice about that is it's, what's interesting actually, since that was initiated back in 2017, we have started to receive payments on that opioid settlement starting in, excuse me. Here we go. In November of last year. So altogether, year to date, I'm happy to report that thanks to the efforts of, you know, again, Eric Haraford and along with our current County Council, they continued pursuit of these opioid settlement funds. And year to date, we have received again grand total of a hundred and fourteen thousand estimated. So I just want to share that good news. Again, I do realize, you know, having Health and Human Services in my background, our Health Department did create an opioid coalition because it is an issue for our county. And I reached out to Director Hamilton to see if there's any thoughts, if they'd like to use, may possibly request funds from that to support their efforts. But again, it is currently going into general fund. But again, I just want to make sure the Board's aware of that, that funding.
Thank you.
And that's all I have at the moment.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to know with those funds that are coming in, is that an annuity? Or is it going to pay out a certain amount just over time?
I think County Council will cover that.
So it's set up right now, just to give you a little bit of background. The lawsuit involved a number of different opioid manufacturers, producers, distributors, and folks that worked in PR. So the original settlements are with two of the bigger companies. And they are structured settlements over a period of time, not annuity. So it will, I believe we have or Jensen received two payments so far. I believe there are more coming. But there are still multiple other entities that have not been resolved. And this is a nationwide litigation from a California perspective. There, it's also internally handled through the Attorney General's Office. So we coordinate with them on payments. But right now, again, two of the twenty have settled. So there's anticipated to be a significant amount of additional money coming in.
Thank you.
And Jensen was one, Purdue the other one?
Correct. Good memory. Thank you.
How much were we thinking total? We talked about this number six months ago, maybe?
So again, we don't know the total number on the litigation because it is very actively ongoing. I believe the, we have one additional payment coming in from Purdue. I believe Jensen may have paid out, but I'll double check on that. But again, we don't know how these are going to ultimately settle. Once they settle, the money goes into the Attorney General of California. They distribute it based on population size and impact. And we had to do a significant amount of discovery. So we had to work with all the departments that have an impact from opioids to determine the impact on our community to try to get that number higher. And because Trinity County has typically had one of the higher rates of opioid use in the state. And so then those factors all take, get taken into consideration. And then the Attorney General proposes a percentage that comes to Trinity County.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. Let's start with Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
I had a nice week this week. It's been fun getting to meet more and more folks. So I'm grateful for that. I did yesterday take a tour with some landowners up to the Canyon Creek slide to take a look at what was going on up there. And I would like, like I said earlier, having been a citizen who's been trapped on the other side of a ongoing project multiple times throughout my adult life, I so appreciate information. And once given that information, I was able to settle in my, in my life, you know, how I was going to work through those things. And I would like to request that our Department of Transportation, as well as other folks who have heavy interest in that road, including the Forest Service and perhaps our emergency services, have a, a public meeting with the folks who live on Canyon Creek Road. I just feel like they, they have expressed multiple times that they don't have any idea really what's going on. And it makes it hard to be at peace in your own home or to go run errands that you need to run. And I just find that information really helps, helps calm things down a little bit. So I would like to request that we encourage them to have a public meeting with the folks.
Okay. So let's go ahead and give direction to our CIO to work with the Department of Transportation or OES, those folks that may be involved and set something up. And it only makes sense. I mean, we do public meetings on a regular basis when we have a fire. Information calms nerves. And so that would be, that would be great.
Okay. No problem. Okay. And I would be more than happy to help in any way that I am asked to. Yeah, we'll be sure to offer Zoom capability, of course. Can't drive over. So.
We'll coordinate that. And is that the end of your report?
I did participate in a meeting with the Prescribed Burn Association, just talking about possible fundings for the communities of Sawyer and Hawkins Bar through different, through different funding sources to prepare for next year's wildfire season. That is all.
All right. Good. All right.
So one question on that. If we do have a meeting with the people behind the slide at Canyon Creek, would it only be Zoom? Or would we have any liability if we ask those folks to come out, pass the slide and say something happened at that time?
So I, I don't know if necessarily we'd have liability, but it is not necessarily recommended from a health and safety standpoint to ask people to drive over anything that's unsafe. So I don't know. I would have to talk to Panos to determine if there's multiple ways to get around it. But I think Zoom is a very good, good tool to use. But again, liability, if they choose to go over a road that is not sanctioned through the county or the state, they're taking on their personal liability to do that.
Would Heidi or myself or anybody be able to sign a waiver to go, for us to go beyond that?
You could absolutely sign a waiver, but it most likely would not be an enforceable waiver because there's a known risk and you, you can't, you can't waive that. So that wouldn't help. I think announcing a public meeting, allowing people to have the option of Zoom or to come in person, that they're, they can make that choice as adults, you know? But I just know that they, they want information and I feel like we need to give them a chance to understand what's going on.
Okay. Very good. Supervisor Gogan.
I had two meetings this last week, one Trinity County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commission meeting. Everything went well. Also had a North Cal EMS meeting last Thursday. Everything went well there. Jill left me in good hands. That's it for me. No out of county travel at all. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Lutweller.
Okay. Let's see. I have been able to confirm that District One Planning Commissioner, County Board Representative and Airport Advisory Committee members are all going to stay in place going forward. So we won't be replacing any. They've all confirmed they want to move forward. I attended the Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association. And the main thing that I took away from that was the ongoing concerns that we've had with communications since the relocation of the jail and the dispatch. When that happened, we lost the direct line to the top of Oregon Mountain, which means the signals aren't getting to the people that need to respond to them. So we have volunteer fire people that don't know there were calls in their area. So I spoke with the sheriff recently and he was, had gone to bid, had a few options, was looking at signing off on those soon, it sounded like. And it sounded like it might take a few weeks to work through that. But in the meantime, OES was working with some different solutions, I think, being very creative. Thank you for that. Satellite phones, all kinds of things that we might do, but it's, it's a significant problem and it's been going on for quite a while. We, Supervisor Chair Cox and I attended a economic forecast conference in Chico State University last week. Time flies. It was very informative. I passed along some of the forecast information to our CIO so that she could share it with whoever thought was appropriate. But it was interesting to see some of what they had to say. A lot of it, in fact, when they were showing different counties, we weren't included because they only go so far. They're covering a large area. But I did reach out to the presenter and he said in a couple of weeks, he would send us some Trinity County specific information. So when we get that, I'll pass that along as well. But it was a good thing and we got to meet with a number of people that we've been talking to or wanting to talk to. So that was helpful. I have been working on the cannabis financial piece, but I guess I can cover that in the ad hoc update. So I can come back to that if you like. I did attend the Disaster Council since Chair Cox was out of town. And I think the, the most notable item there was one we've been discussing with the Heim Palm Road or the road in Heim Palm that we've been discussing. Wanted to let folks know that I did send out a survey to all of the new supervisors that were elected in California this year and surveyed them about the onboarding process for new supervisors. And we got some good feedback and based on that, I developed a rough template of, of a recommended onboarding process that would provide a little more information as you come into the role and a little more timely information. So that's been shared with the, actually with all those supervisors, the New Supervisor Institute and with our CIO. And confirmed the appointments. I think that'll do it. Thank you.
Supervisor Fraser.
I had no meetings since our last board meeting. Been a slow time with my committees. I will be going to Eureka tomorrow for North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District. And then I also have And then I also have CGD cap meeting coming up in Shasta County later this month. So it's starting to pick up, but I have nothing to report today.
Okay, very good. For myself, my out-of-county travel, of course, was the Economic Forecasting Conference that Supervisor Lutwiler mentioned. And my big win of that meeting was getting to meet Fad Betner. He is the General Manager of the Glen Calusa Irrigation District, and he is the Sites Reservoir Project Chair. So while I was hoping to bring Wendy Tyler up, she's the Calusa County CIO, and I'm sure she still will be willing, just hasn't had time to respond yet. I would like Trinity County to have a presentation on the Sites project, and what is going forward, what's stuck, what's hoped for, and what can possibly be achieved when that project is successful. So I believe he's going to come through with that. I will now report out on our closed session from our January 3rd Board of Supervisors meeting. There were five cases of litigation discussed. Each resulted in direction being given to staff. We have a new plan for today. We're going to, we're either going to utilize a breakout room on Zoom, or if that doesn't work as we wish, we will simply come back to this link and report out what happens today in our closed session. Okay, I am going to follow up on that ad hoc. So I'm going to move into ad hoc, report outs, the Good Neighbor Authority. I spoke with Tara on Monday. And the, the Good Neighbor Authority was, was created by the Forest Service, handed to Trinity County for review and any suggestions for change. There were many. And so when we sent that back, and it got routed for internal review, it's still in that process, because we, we did ask for a lot. And, and I'm pleased with that. David Kolbeck worked really hard to say, how best could this help us? Let's think outside the box. And we, I think we thought so outside the box that we're causing them a little extra work, which is great. And Tara is appreciative of that. She's willing to look into it and see just how far we can move that needle. And so it is still there and will come back to us. Tara and I have a meeting scheduled for January 23. And then she would normally be here today. Typical is to have a Forest Service report out by her, or Supervisor Burkey, or another designee on the second board meeting of every month. That did not hit our calendar today, but it will start again in February, the second meeting of each month. There should be somebody here from the Forest Service. All right, so I'm going to let Supervisor Lutwiler now bring us up to speed on the ad hoc that I assigned two weeks ago, which will end today.
So we'll note on the agenda, there is a recommendation to move forward the decision about additional funding for the Cannabis Department. And a big part of the reason for that is, as we started to look into not only how the money is being spent, but how much money is needed, and what we anticipate that to look like in the future, we realized that to, to really come back to the board with good, solid information to make a decision on, we needed more time. But to give you an idea, what we're looking at is, what are the, the key drivers of the costs and the revenues, if you will, associated with that Cannabis Department, so that we can then build a forecast based on how we think those drivers are going to change over time. And that way, when we're asked to look at, should we put another million dollars in, it will also be able to tell us, well, if we put that million in, here's how we can expect it to look in the beginning of next year, and the beginning of the year after that. So we have, we see, is there a light at the end of the tunnel? Is this something that we should continue to invest in? And what should we expect in the future? So that's what we're working on, and just more time was needed.
Okay, thank you for that. So the reason I'm ending the ad hoc today is because I said I would. And we are going to re-instigate this under a little different format. And so I had kind of tried to go this direction a couple of weeks ago, but I didn't do my due diligence and have that thoughtful conversation with County Council beforehand. Now we've been able to have that, and I understand what it is that I can do and want to do. And that is to create what is called a Staff Committee with Board Liaison. So the difference between that and an ad hoc is interesting. An ad hoc is when you have one or two board members, and they're tasked with a project, and then staff realizes that wherever they need support or input, then that is expected. This is upside down of that. So this is a staff committee, where they then can say, we need board help or input, and that then is provided. And so really, it's just, I think if Margaret wants to, okay, I'm doing well. It's where the burden lies. And so in this case, the burden lies with staff, and then Supervisor Lutwiler is there to provide that input and assistance as needed. So this one will end when the information is able to be collected in the manner needed and successfully brought to the board for approval.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? Are you going to appoint staff to be on this?
Yes.
Or leave that up to them?
So I, I want to make that appointment. And that will be Director Presley, interim Director of Cannabis, Dr. Say that upside down, Plobani, and Tracy Delgado, and am I missing? Suzie Hawkins will be a part of that as needed. And, and then additionally, if they want to bring more people in as the Cannabis Department needs, that certainly is fine, but that core team should definitely be involved. All right. With that, we will move into the Consent Calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon by the Board in one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the Consent Calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the Board or staff may request an item be polled and considered separately. So do we have any public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, nothing in the room. So we will close public comment and ask the Board, are there any items that anyone would like to pull? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt as presented.
I second.
Okay. Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Okay, county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board, staff, or public may request an item be heard out of order. Are there any requests to change the order? All right, seeing none. Item 3.1, present a strategic plan implementation process update, no fiscal impact. Supervisor Lutwiler.
Thank you. We have a presentation that we'll walk through quickly, just to get people understanding what we're working on here. We do the PowerPoint first. As that's being brought up, I can just start in on this. So we worked with a consultant, actually, I guess, over quite a period of time, but came forward to the Board with a strategic plan update back in September that presented the core structure of a strategic plan and a process for completing that. And that was in September, and here we are in January, and we really haven't made much progress on that. And in part, because there just has been so little availability for especially our CIO, who has to work in a constrained way and is taking a lot of roles. So we started to look at how we could pick that up and start to move it forward, building on what's already been done. As CIO Garza mentioned, that included looking at the placemaking action plan that was done, because there were several components of that that fit very nicely into what we already had identified for the strategic plan. So what we're trying to do here is, is show, where are we in that process? How will we move forward? We've already had one meeting just to kind of discuss how this could happen, so that we could put this forward. And there were five department heads that raised their hand and said, we'll, we'll participate in helping to carry this forward. So we talked through how we might allocate the assignments that come from completing the plan, and a timeline that we might work on. So what's going to end up happening is that I will make about an hour a week available for any of those five department heads to come in and meet. We will use an agreed-upon template to then start to document how we are going to deliver on the milestones and the deliverables that were identified in that document. So it's nice that we said we're going to do these things. Now we're going to say, how are we going to do them? By when will we do them? And what resources do we need? Because there could be some that can only be done with money or additional headcount or something, and we need to be clear about that. You will note when we come together with that, that the plan, again, ideally would have been completed back in, say, June, but it was September. So when we said what will happen in that year, that meant basically by the end of June. And now we're talking about it in January. So there will be some of those things that have been underway, and they will get done, and we will be providing those updates. But there will be others that will just have to be extended. And so the, the documentation will show what are our new timeframes for those things. We will provide monthly updates to the Board regarding the progress in that. And the idea is that I would continue to work with that group until the plan is complete, and/or the new CIO is on board and says, he doesn't need my assistance anymore. So it's really just trying to fill in and help that process along the way. And we'll be very transparent, coming back with updates and progress reports during the process. But hopefully, at least by June 1st, we will be done with that process.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions of Supervisor Lutwiler? And while you're thinking of those, I am establishing an ad hoc today. Under the outline that Supervisor Lutwiler provided, we will have weekly meetings of staff work groups, monthly meetings, updates to the Board, and this transit, the ad hoc will end when we do transition and hand this project over to the new CIO, as technically should be the CIO's job, but we are assisting when time is so limited. So that, I've been in on these meetings, and this ad hoc will be Supervisor Lutwiler and myself.
Can you bring that one document up again that you started with? I just want to show one thing. As we started to have these conversations, we were looking at, well, what is in the strategic plan? And what is in the placemaking plan? And how do these things start to go together? So let's go, there's one more that has the different, it's tight, at the top, it has strategic plan and placemaking plan. I think it was the first one you put up. Okay, so this is an example where this spreadsheet shows in the first column, what are the components of the Trinity County Strategic Plan? In the middle is what do we see happening that is related to that section in the placemaking action plan? And in this case, there wasn't anything. And then we started to identify some community-driven initiatives that are taking place, because we wanted to be thinking about those as we're working on the overall plan. And so as we move forward, what you'll be able to see, and I think, Ashley, if you could go down to, it's close to the end where we have the business and economic development piece. There we go. So here's where you start to see more of how things come together. So in the first column, we have housing affordability and inventory. That was a Trinity County strategic plan component. Housing was a component of the placemaking plan. And so we talk about what came out of that plan that we spent a lot of time and money on. And then we identified some things that community groups were working on that were related to housing. And the idea is that by marrying all these together, we will be able to find opportunities to work together more effectively, bring help to each other, and, and make sure that we're, we're not kind of working, hopefully, especially not at odds, but also that we're working in a way that can complement each other. And so this process will continue to go. This document is very incomplete in the sense that we've only begun to capture public, community-driven initiatives, but we want to make sure that that continues to happen. And we'll share more information about this to try to make that possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at the Board? Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands.
Right. Okay, item 3.2, discuss and/or provide direction to staff regarding the potential allocation of the county's remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds, and authorize the county administrative officer and auditor controller to sign any necessary budget agreements to spend the ARP funds as approved by the Board, up to $263,422 from the remaining American Rescue Plan funds. CIO Garza.
Okay, so as presented to you in the staff report, there's, there's a lengthy report on just the history and information on how we have used these funds. And I provided that to you, or we provided that to you, so you can have a review for those of you who are new board members, just to have a little history. Along with this report, we did receive a request from the Resource Conservation District to request some funding to support their revenue shortfall during the COVID-19 pandemic. As many of you may be familiar, RCD is a special district, and they do provide a number of services and great support to our, our county's forest and environment. And so Manager Kelly Sheen is here to, to respond to any questions you may have regarding this request. But ultimately, for your information, there is only the remaining dollars, so $263,000 left of these ARPA money. So it is up for discussion, and it is for your consideration to review his request, and to see if you would want to direct staff to, you know, provide them any type of funding.
Okay. And before we move to your questions from the Board, I'm going to allow the Director to make any comments he would like.
I'm Chair Cox.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris.
Supervisor Jim Gogan.
Supervisor Frazier and Supervisor Lutwiler, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this morning about this request. Did provide, and I was in your board packets, some information about how we were impacted by COVID-19 and the lockdown, especially in the year of 2020. And I was wanting to expand a little, a bit on sort of the, the information that I was providing at that time. So we are, as CIO Garza mentioned, we are a special district, and we got caught between worlds, so to speak, with regard to COVID relief. Our, our district doesn't receive any tax base funding from the state or the county. We're completely 100% grant-driven, with a little bit of, about 5% of our budget comes from fee-for-service. And so that's a lot of different kinds of partnerships that we bring funding in to the county through those, you know, state and federal means. And I'd like to give just a little bit of, a little bit of my personal background, just because I've been with the district for 27 years. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, Kelly Sheen, District Manager, with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. I've lived in Trinity County most of my life. And I've spent 27 years serving the public through various means at the district. And having grown up here, my, my parents moved here when I was about a year old, and, you know, I spent a And, you know, I spent a lot of time, you know, exploring the county and the wonderful places that we have here in this, in this amazing and magical place. And I grew to really love this space. And when I started working with the district in 1995, you know, it became sort of an accidental career, really. And, you know, different aspects of the work that I did at the, at the district have been in support of, of the county of Trinity, especially G I S support services for about 20 years. And then I had institutional knowledge and was asked to step into more administrative roles. And I've seen a lot of how the district has functioned. And our district was formed in 1956. And at the time that it was formed, there was specific language in the formation papers that basically barred us from, you know, receiving any general fund tax dollars through, through the county or through the state or anything. It was always meant to be a standalone autonomous district that was sanctioned by government code Division 9 of State of California. And we have for a very long time operated, or let's say the past 30 years, operated on a, on a, you know, as needed basis. We've kind of grown over years of, of learning how to do the, the kind of conservation practices that we do at scale at, on the landscape. And those have evolved from just doing like infrastructure work, like shoring up roads, replacing culverts, doing this sort of work, as well as landscape restoration, replanting, reforestation, slope stabilization, things of this nature. And Grass Valley Creek particularly was our, our, our first major foray into doing this work. And it, and that project was about 10 years in the making. And from that, we made many, many partner, we formed many partnerships with B L M, with the Bureau of Land Management, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, the U S Forest Service. And, and now, you know, we have become an implementation arm to those, to those entities. And when we got into the first, you know, when the lockdown really happened, you know, we, we nearly shut down because we had no ability to, you know, we didn't have any payroll protection program to lean on. We didn't have any, we, just through the dedication and the, and the, you know, the, the belief of our, our employees, did we actually make it through that time period, that first six months was, and like I said, we nearly shuttered up and, and had, and blew away. And it has created a, you know, we, we ended up having to basically cut hours. We had to about 50% time. We maintained people's benefits. And at that time, we had about 20 people on staff, you know. Since then, we've, we've grown significantly and we made it through. But it, and we have ramifications that are longstanding, sort of financial implication, implications. Specifically, you know, you know, what really floated us through that time period, like I said, was sort of that dedication. We, we didn't have anybody quit their jobs. We just had, you know, had everybody sort of cut back to about one week on, one week off for about six months. And that was enough to get us, you know, through that time period. But because of the way that we do invoicing, because of the way that we acquire our funding, and because of the fact that this, you know, was impacting the world and it was impacting all of our partners, it slowed down all of our reimbursables because we essentially work on a reimbursement basis for most of our grant funders. And so we took on a lot of, of debt in order to keep people in, you know, keep people working to whatever extent we could. One of our major issues that we had was the delay that it caused on several of our projects. And because of that delay, those, you know, that we weren't able to start an implementation season, there were a number of projects that went uncompleted. And when that happens and we, you know, leave money on the table, or in some cases, when we've had to return, you know, advances that we may have been able to, unable to spend, it creates a great deal of financial strain on us. And so one of the things that I provided to you was a, a comparison of the actual revenues that we took in for the fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, which is the one that impacted us the most, and fiscal year 21, which also, like I said, you know, for between March and September, our fiscal year ends on June 30th. So we had about six, about three months on either side where this was impacting us. It shows very clearly that we are having a growth pattern. And in that fiscal year 20, was it, was disrupted by the impacts of COVID. And it shows not only the specific revenues that we actually took in for each of those three fiscal years, but what we had budgeted for. And in that middle year, our, you know, we had a couple of, you know, modest gains on either side. And then a loss of about $455,000 based on what we had budgeted and what we actually took on. That, that was devastating and is continuing to be problematic for us. Even through our growth cycle, like I said, we've, we've, we have gotten bigger. We have taken on more capacity. We are doing more work. But we are not, we operate as a not-for-profit organization. So we, we didn't have reserves before and we certainly don't have reserves now that, you know, could have absorbed that amount of funding. We had a, had to lean heavily on a fairly significant line of credit that we happen to have with, and expand on with a local, our local financial institution. And that by and large is what floated us through that time period. I wanted to also basically state that, you know, while it's likely that we will eventually recover from this, it has hindered our ability to accomplish things. And like I said, because we had a, had a delay on, on our implementation, the types of work that we do were, you know, held off. We could have gotten a lot of things done in that particular year. And I wanted to give an example of how important the work is that we do to the communities of Trinity County. We work all over the county. We work for Six Rivers National Forest down in the Ruth and Ketten Palm and Xenia area, doing fields reduction, doing restoration post-fire for the August complex, which also hit us that same year. We do education and outreach type programs for the Trinity River Restoration Program. For environmental, we have environmental education camps at Bar 717. And we rebuild summer day camp here at the Young Family Ranch. We provide, like I said, reforestation and revegetation projects. We've been working with Caltrans for a number of years on their major slides, like the big French slide or the Slate Creek slide up here. We're going to be working with them in the future on the restoration of the site for the new Swift Creek Bridge and the, and the Ditch Gulch Bridge down in, on 36. So we do a lot of that, but we also, and we do a great deal of, we have a project with the California Department of Conservation doing riparian restoration work on the Travis Ranch, which is a 12,000 acre ranch in South County between Ruth and Xenia. And so, you know, we're, we're doing work all over the county. But the, one of the biggest ones that we, we do, as I said, you know, we've, with all the August complex, we've been doing road work and infrastructure work for the Forest Service on both sides of the hill for Shasta Trinity National Forest and Six Rivers National Forest post, post-August complex, post-monument fire, post-McFarland fire. We're going to be working with the Forest Service coming up, doing some restoration work for the river complex, et cetera. We're also working sort of across boundaries down river with the Willow Creek Fire Save Council. So doing work on both sides of the border. We're in those hinterlands where, you know, it makes more sense to be working across jurisdictional lines. So this work, you know, as I said, is, is ongoing. And like I said, we're not going to dry up and blow away. We've, we've been around for many, many, many decades and I personally have seen a lot of ups and downs. But I hadn't seen anything like what we experienced with, with the pandemic and, and the impacts that we've had fiscally and financially with regards to us trying to just keep our doors open. And so we didn't have the opportunity, like I said, we didn't have a payroll protection plan. We didn't, you know, to a program to, to tap into, they were, they were not included in the CARES Act or the ARPA Act to give us direct funding as, as, you know, small businesses, NGOs, like nonprofit organizations and things like that than municipalities and counties had. So when this opportunity came up, knowing that the county had some level of discretion with regard to how they spent their funding, we decided to put a request in for some of that, some support with regard to that last April of 2022. And that's the letter that was included with this particular ask. And what I would like to say is that, and I know that we're looking at, you know, remaining funding of about $263,000 and our loss was much larger than that. Loss of revenues, I should say, was much larger than that. I would like, you know, I know that there's, you know, this local assistance and tribal consistency fund, funding that's also become available to you now. And I, I would say that as partners, you know, we've provided G I S services to the county directly. We've done all sorts of environmental plant, like planning documents of various sorts. We've done a lot of work and partnered with the county and had really good relationships with the county for a very long time and never asked a single thing of the county as far as, you know, you know, additional funds, you know, outside of the services that we actually provide. So that being said, I'd like to have you consider this as an investment. Because back in 2015, the Department of Conservation basically provided a, a grant to us for $46,000 for capacity building, which allowed us to do a number of things, including updating our strategic plan and some updating our policy handbooks and some other items like that. But we also invested about 6,000 or 7,000 of that, of that, of those funds in grant writing. And we bring millions of dollars into this county every year. Like I said, it's almost all time and materials. We are not operating on any kind of real margin and, and be able to build, you know, reserves that would allow us to weather these sorts of things, which is why we were hit so hard in 2020. And so when we invested those 6,000 or 7,000 dollars in just, you know, staff time to actually create those, we, we actually, to create those proposals, we made about $500,000. So we capitalized almost, you know, 100%, 1,000% basically on what, on what that investment was. And so to me, I'd like for you to think about this as an investment in a partner that will be able to take the funds that you provided to us, create, you know, more stability for us financially and give us an opportunity to continue this cycle of bringing money into this county. So thank you for, for that. And I would entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, I do have to say that I probably would have to be recused from the decision on this because I served on the Trinity County Resource Conservation District Board when this letter of request was drafted.
So the procedure, if you have to recuse, would be that you would have to exit the room until this matter is over and then we'll call you back when it's done. And that's, that's significant information to put it on the record. So thank you.
Okay. Questions about the board members?
I guess this is a question for Letty. As far as the tribal money that we just got, are you willing to part with some of that to help them out? You know, I know we're.
Well, again, this is a request for the board's consideration. And, you know, those, those funds do recognize nonprofits. So, you know, I, you know, I am at the, at the board's pleasure what you like to do with those funds. So I do recognize R C D is a valuable partner in our county and they have done some amazing projects. And I, I, I do know they are the one special district that does not receive any property tax revenue as our other special districts do. So, you know, I do want to recognize that for you. And there are other special districts that do receive, you know, county services. And I provided all of you a list of those special districts and what services they do receive. R C D is not one of those. So there's a lot to consider. And yes, we do, we do have this remaining funds. We have the other additional funds that we spoke about at the last meeting. A lot to, you know, to think about. I know the 4.8 million is, is a lot of money, but it can go really quick. And there's a lot of big projects such as the Canyon Creek. That's going to be a huge project that we may have to consider. Approximately, it could be up to 2 million. So again, is that your pleasure that, you know, I will proceed with whatever direction you give me?
Okay. Questions from others?
I just, I might not have specifics, but I was just wondering what the plans, what R C D's plans are for spending this money? What do you guys, what are you going to use it for? Would be a question that I'd like to.
Absolutely. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, we have fairly significant line of credit, which, you know, we're paying interest on still that we would like to basically get paid off. As I said, you know, most of the, most of that loss of revenues created a situation where we were spending money that we didn't have and couldn't bill for during that period of time in administrative overhead. And our administrative overhead during that time went up to something like 35%, which normally it's right around 20. And because we have no ability to, you know, to, to bill up for work that we're not doing. And so, so the intent would be to shore up our financial obligations. We did have one advance from Caltrans that, like I was mentioning earlier, that we weren't able to complete the project and spend out the entirety of the advance, which we would have been able to if we had been able to work during that period of time. So that obligation itself is like $100,000. And so between that and the, I mean, and the, the line of credit that we would like to basically have paid off, that covers, so it can be a portion of that. And then the other would be to, you know, the other thing would be like, as I was saying, would be going into sort of recuperating from some of the, there's the general, how I put it? The general expenses that have gone out that we haven't been able to recuperate. And so the, and, and we also want to invest a certain amount of that money into, on, you know, that's the other part of our work is, is as being a grant funded organization, we're always doing proposals. And we really have no way to build those proposals. So a lot of that goes into our administrative overhead also. So we would invest a lot of, a fair bit of that funding into being able to then do, have a kind of set aside fund through which we can invest that money into, you know, acquiring more money. Like I said, we have a, during that program that the DOC had done. during that program that the DOC had done, as I mentioned, they calculated that that money was spread throughout the entirety of this, just specifically RCD's throughout the entirety of the of the state. And their average return on investment was, for every dollar that they spent, there was $53 that was brought into those districts. And so that's why we would like to have a little bit of funding set aside to be able to, you know, continue to build our grant proposals and bring more money into the county.
So Kelly, if I'm hearing you correctly, most of this is just to get whole again?
Yes.
One question I did have, you have a shortfall of 455,000, but then you just mentioned $100,000 from Caltrans. Was that included in your 455?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And over the three-year projection here, well, not a projection. This is if you take that 455,000 plus shortfall and you add the other two years in, it looks like 342,924. Is that how you look at it as a as a total?
Not exactly. It, for us, it is sort of like a hole. And like I said, that spilled over into the into the following year. That gain that we showed, I guess, on the fiscal year '21 would have been significantly larger. So, I mean, technically, the loss, that was an easy to represent, the loss of revenues. We're also, you know, like I said, we're we're kind of, we had been operating at about two, and I'll be completely honest and transparent about this, but like we've been operating at about a $2 million level for, you can see those two years were at about 1.8. We'd been operating at about 2 million for decades. It hasn't only been recently that we've created and, let's say, our administrative overhead never actually covered our actual expenses. And we were rolling through quite a number of years, especially as I was beginning and prior to my time here. We were operating at losses for quite a number of years. So the gains that we've only recently started to experience are also taking care of longer term debts that we had as well.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, I just want to be completely transparent.
Yep.
So outside of that one particular blip, you know, for 2020, there was other issues that we're also addressing.
Okay.
Which we've now gotten to, you know, like we're in a much better place, generally speaking, as far as our operations are concerned.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We will move into public comment. We do have some, you'll need to come to the podium if you would like to speak.
It's just, it's just a quick question. I want to know how many people RCD employs.
Kelly, you'll need to come.
As I said, during this period of time, we were employing about 20 people. And, you know, that was, and that's including seasonal temporaries. We now employ close to 40, 40 people. And we actually are looking to expand out from that. So that's, you know, and almost all of those people, I'd say there's maybe three or four of them that live down in Redding area, but all the rest of them are local. So all that money goes directly back into the local economy in the same way that, you know, everybody that lives here does, so.
That includes direct employment, but then we also employ many contractors. Do you have any estimate about how many people that would be?
Well, currently, I just finished our second quarter budget revision. And we we usually, I think this year, we're putting about $1 million into contracting, which probably is in effect, I'm going to say at least 20 or 30 more individuals and companies that we would be, that we we also support, some of which are local, some of which are not. Definitely, you know, regional folks. We do get some large, larger equipment operators and things like that that come in from like the valley and things of that nature.
Okay. Any other questions in the room? Comment? Right, any on Zoom? All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
So I guess I will make a statement then. With the money that we've given already to almost all of our ARPA funds out, there's $263,000 left. It would seem to me with the amount of people that RCD employs, with the dollar coming back as a $50 bill, as Kelly said, for $53, I think it was. This may be some of the wisest money we've spent, in my opinion. So I have no hesitancy trying to make RCD whole again. It just seems, out of all the things we've done, the very, the most right thing to do with this money.
Do you want to turn that into a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to turn that into a motion that we spend, I'd like to save some of that ARPA money. We got 263. So how about, well, I should confer with Letty first. What is a comfortable number for you to be left with out of that 263? Is there one?
As with anything, you know, rounding to an even number would be helpful unless you want to apply the full amount, but, you know.
I'm hesitant to apply the full amount just because I'm not sure what's coming down the road for us. See, would you say 200, 175 is a?
That is your option.
Okay. I would say, I'd like to make a motion to give RCD $200,000 out of the ARPA funds and $250,000 out of the tribal fund of the 4.8 million that we just got.
I think I would have an issue with that. We do not have an agenda stick
Correct.
for the tribal funding that's coming up. So I don't think that we can allocate funds to that.
We don't, say it one more time?
You can't allocate funds out of the tribal funds yet because that's not an agenda's discussion.
Then my, my motion would be to give them $200,000 out of the ARPA funds at this time.
Just for, real quick, before you look for your second, for clarification, Liam, does your motion include an authorizing the CEO and the auditor to sign any necessary budget adjustments to allocate those funds as directed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a second?
I will second that at least for discussion. And I do, I think I would have another question for Letty for that is, as CAO, do you have any other plans for that funding?
We have not received any additional requests. However, any remaining of any ARPA funds or other funds out there, it's up for review and discussion that we've been having because there's been a lot of requests from department heads. So there's a lot of conversations happening with this money. But this particular remaining, no requests have been made, so.
And another, is there?
Want it.
Is there a time limit on when this is supposed to be spent?
No, there's not a time limit.
Okay.
I believe the ARPA fund does have a time limit. Yes. It's, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe it has to be allocated by 2025 and spent thereafter. But I want to double check that.
All right, I'm pretty sure, sorry, Suzy Hawkins, Senior Financial Analyst. I'm pretty sure that these funds have to be spent by December 31st of 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then the other question I would have is the $200,000 number, is that something that you just pulled out of the air or is there a reason behind that?
Tons of documentation. No, I'm just kidding. I I didn't, I pulled 200,000 out just to leave a 63,000, just in case something else came up. I know it doesn't completely make them whole, but I think it's as close as we can get with the funds that we have to ARPA that are available now, leaving us a little bit of a cushion for some of the other things that may come up.
Okay, any other discussion of the competing motion?
Just a follow-up question too. Technical, I guess, have we done any outreach to organizations to let them know that these funds are available to even submit a request? Obviously, Kelly was aware and jumped on it, but I'm wondering.
There has been no outreach. However, these funds have been discussed several times at board meetings.
Okay.
And and I'm sure reported out in the Trinity Journal. So but as a specific outreach, no.
And for further piece of information, the RCD approached the board back when we were even deciding what to do with the CARES Act funding, and that was all dispersed other places. And then the ARPA funding was on the horizon, they waited, it came in, and now they're asking again.
And it's not to say, just for the board to know, you know, as we do have other special districts, you know, this could cause other special districts to come forward. So just be aware of that. But at this time, this is the one request we've received.
And the other, just the one distinguishing factor between this special district and all others is this is the only one that does not have any sort of a tax.
That's my understanding from the auditor's office, yes.
If you don't mind.
The only thing isn't Copy Creek volunteer fire department, a district that has no tax base?
Don't know.
I'm pretty sure from being to their fundraising efforts that that's the case.
So it might not be actually a special district. It might be under another special district.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
One thing I would say, just to add to that answer, would be that not only do we not get tax, any kind of tax revenues or anything like that, but we also don't have a, you know, PUD, for example. We don't have a commodity that we sell that has, that, you know, was contiguous through, you know, that time period. So the losses that were realized by numbers, by quite a number of the districts in the county were not as significant. And they were, there were other opportunities to acquire some additional funding for things like additional expenses, which we were able to, we were able to actually acquire some funding from the state directly from a, from a state budgetary appropriation. But that, that wasn't the revenue loss, that was just additional unexpected expenses.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion, competing motions?
I would like to make a motion that we allocate up to 263,422 as outlined in the documentation.
Okay, I will second that for discussion.
For, real quick, just for confirmation that this motion and second include the direction that the CEO and the auditor can sign the budget adjustments necessary based on your direction?
Yes.
And yes.
The issue I have with allocating all the funds, I would have no problem with that if we knew how exactly it was going to be spent. I I expect it to be spent wisely, but I have a lot less problem. Okay, let's pay off their debt, that's fine. But if we have other special districts that come forward that have also acquired debt through this process, and then we gave more than the debt to the RCD, then we're left hanging. So that's, that's something that I I wouldn't want to spend it all at once. I know that in Kelly's presentation, he brought up the $100,000 that have to pay back to Caltrans and their line of credit. But I conceive we need to pay that, but we have a list of special districts that, especially after this meeting, might be coming forward and saying, hey, we have this debt that we had to take on because of the pandemic. And that it would be nice if we had at least something to help that leftover.
And and based on that, are you comfortable, most comfortable with the 200,000 number?
I would be more comfortable with the 200,000 number or yeah, I would definitely be more comfortable with that number because if we say up to 263,422, I mean, they they showed us a shortfall of 455,000, that's, we will give them the whole amount. So that, I would definitely be more, have more. I would feel better with it's having a little bit left over in case one of the other special districts does come forward. And then if if nobody does and they come back and say, hey, we need more help, I'm fine with giving it to them. But to give it all at one time, it would be a little reckless, I think.
So would that be your motion?
As you already made the motion, so.
Well, with what you put on there, you you said that if no one came to claim the 63,000 extra dollars, you would be happy enough to.
Well, I I think that we can leave that on Kelly to come back with that. And then I I also, I mean, personally, I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable with, in the future with these requests instead of just showing us the shortfall, but to show us actual debt and and how they plan to use that funding. Because not, not everybody's ideas are the same of correct use of this kind of funding.
And another comparison, if we were to look at other special districts that may also want to enter the conversation, would be what kind of investment opportunities do those other special districts participate in to where we can see $53 coming back for every dollar spent?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead.
No, go, no.
I was just going to say, I I think both from information I gathered meeting with Kelly probably a year ago now, when I was first getting up to speed on things and and what he shared today, that the return on investment that we get from what goes on there is huge. And they've clearly been extremely good stewards. I completely agree with what Supervisor Fraser is saying. I think besides return on investment, it's good to see specifically how money will be used. And and so that can be a standard that we set as an expectation going forward. And and it's also, we don't want to lose sight that, as Kelly said, we we would have the opportunity to consider additional funds either from this later, if nobody else comes forward, or and or from the 4.8 million bucket that we would just need to stack up against all the myriad of options that are being put forward for that money as well. So I'm I'm comfortable then with moving forward based on that.
So with that, did you want to remove your motion from the table?
Yes.
I think that's.
Yeah, I'll remove my.
That is withdrawing the motion.
Okay.
All right. So we're back at our initial motion from Supervisor Gogan, and I'll let you repeat that.
The original motion was to give RCD 200,000 and allowing the CEO and auditor to sign any necessary budget adjustments.
Okay.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Hi.
Chairman Cox?
Hi.
And Supervisor Cox, I would recommend we take a short recess while we go find Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
We're going to take a two-minute recess while she comes back in because I need to move the next item forward in time.
I just want to say thank you very much.
You have to go.
Your consideration.
Okay.
Very much appreciate it.
I appreciate all of you.
Okay. All right. Actually, with that, I'm going to take a five-minute break. Okay, it is 10:55, calling the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. We are on item 3.3. If we can pull it in, okay. Waive the reading of and enact an ordinance emitting Trinity County Code Section 2.64.050 regarding various county fees. Potential increase in revenues in an unknown amount to various county departments, C O Garza.
Excuse me, uh, yes, this is a continuation of the discussion of the prepared fees that was prepared by our, our financial consultant, Craig Goodman, along with our senior financial analyst, Suzie Hawkins. So it is up for discussion, review, and hopefully adoption.
And to be clear, if we adopt this today, this is the final, will go into effect in 30 days or immediately?
It's 30 days, isn't it? 30 days.
Okay. All right, um, and also, also to be clear, we had had this discussion a little bit, but with that 30-day gap, if someone were to enter into any, any of these items that needs to be charged, if they did that today, they would still be charged the previous rate and the 30 days not, it would still be in that gap. Okay, all right, any questions from board members? All right, uh, would you have any public comment on this item in the room? No, any public comment on Zoom?
I have no raised hand.
All right.
I have a raised hand from from Sax.
Okay. Good morning, Sheriff Saxon.
Good morning, Chair, Board, thank you very much for allowing me to comment here. I apologize, the last board meeting, I was unable to attend uh, when this item was discussed, and I apologize for this, there are a couple of items that I would like to talk about here. These items were previously discussed during the uh, uh, initial discussions on these fees. One item that was brought to my attention again by the animal control officer and myself during conversation was the removing the incentive between altered and unaltered animals with regard to dog licenses. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, you know, as you well know, the animal shelter has been inundated with, with uh, animals over the last year and a half to two years. By combining these two classifications in one fee, I think is uh, removing that incentive. And we're going to continue to see an increase in animals, especially since the fact that we're no longer making an incentive to have owners alter their animals. The other issue I'd like to bring your attention is, on this fee schedule, we are deleting issues with regard to kennel permit applications, hobbyist rancher permits, commercial permits, and sanctuary permits. Those items are required in our Trinity County Municipal Code under 6.04.080. So if we are going to move forward, delete those, then we're going to have to do something to amend our Trinity County Codes on those issues. So if anybody comes forward to request a permit with regard to what's required there, we're not going to be able to charge any fees on that, which is uh, gonna require a lot of time by our animal control officer to go out and perform those duties at no charge. So those are the two items that I, I did want to bring up to you. Um, and again, I apologize for bringing it up at this point in time, um, because I was not able to make the last meeting. So those are my comments, I thank you very much.
Uh, Sheriff Saxon, I'm gonna, I'm going to have you hop back on as soon as we're done with public comments, so we can have a few more questions if we could please.
Thank you.
I have no other raised hands.
All right, with that, we're gonna close public comment, and Sheriff Saxon, would you hop back on? And I was trying to scroll through the backup data to find exactly what you were talking about as you were speaking. So could you just kind of repeat for me? I think you are on page three of the ordinance or 631 of the backup data.
Yeah, page three of 11, dog licenses. Where it says the new fee altered and unaltered, one-year license, $11. If you scroll down a little bit more, we used to have altered one-year license of $10, unaltered one-year license $20. That gave an incentive for people to license altered animals as opposed to unaltered animals.
So you're, you're simply, could you just state it for me how you would like it to be? Simply don't delete or?
What I'm saying is previously, there was the incentive to license an altered animal at $10, as opposed to an unaltered animal at $20. So it was twice as expensive to license an unaltered animal. Uh, many of our surrounding areas basically do the same thing. It's a higher fee to license an unaltered animal. Um, we brought this up during negotiations on our fees. And I, I don't remember the exact, the exact conversation, but it was something along the lines of unable to justify the difference in expenses. And I can understand that to a point, but at the same time, we're looking at the issue of overcrowding of our animal shelter and being able to, to uh, have the public have the incentive of, of getting their animals altered, so that we don't continue to have the overcrowding issues that we have at this time. And it's hard to monetize the, the impact that that has on the public. And, and I understand the whole point of fees is to be able to justify to the public the amount of money that they're paying for the services that we're getting. But in this particular case, you cannot really monetize how many unaltered animals in the public are procreating and causing an issue for additional animals coming into the shelter. And so I think in the past, and, and we can go back many, many, many years, I mean, decades, just speaking from personal experience, in my animal ownership, everywhere I've lived in the state of California, there's always been an additional charge to license an unaltered animal.
Sure, so I guess the specific question that I would have then is that if we were to return to an incentive schedule, the new proposed fee is higher than the old one. And so we're gonna need a suggested price that the two different items then would be.
Supervisor Cox, can I jump in here real quick?
Please.
Um, the way I understand our fee scheduling, we, I don't believe we could charge a higher rate for altered, or for, for an unaltered animal. The only thing we could do would be to lower the rate for an unaltered animal, because we're supposed to be doing cost recovery with fees. So in order to, we would have to incentivize the unaltered, or the altered animals by giving that license at a cost that would cost the county money. So um, that's just the way I understand how we could, we can't penalize someone for having a, an unaltered pet. We can only incentivize the altered version.
So Supervisor Fraser is correct, you cannot charge more than the actual costs. So the actual costs are a set, a set regardless of whether it's on altered and unaltered, you can't increase that amount as a penalty.
Okay.
Um, and I was not part of the discussions, but I believe the sheriff most likely expressed the opinions of those that were working on it regarding this, which is when, when you're looking at fee recovery, you're looking at actual costs, it has no penalties associated with it. Um, and it cannot have any, you know, any sort of punishment for, for activity. In order for you to make a modification of it, you would have to find a monetary reason to do so. I think the sheriff has done a good job of explaining some of the monetary reasons, but at, you know, on the fly, I don't believe we can quantify that. So my recommendation, if this is the board's intent to look at that further, is to move forward on this and then bring that item back specifically to look at, so we can make sure that we make the appropriate findings and that we're not charging a penalty or we're not uh, not creating a, a fee without having proper justification for it.
Yeah. So are, are you saying if we chose to not do this particular part, just these particular fees taken out of what we're approving today? And come back to those, or I wanted to make sure I understood?
No, I was recommending moving forward in its entirety, if it's the board's pleasure, you, you can, you can continue it for another week.
Just continue.
But if you are to make any modifications on the second reading that are that substantial, we would have to make it a first reading, and we'd have to bring it back in two weeks. And therefore that would put out the times the other departments can start recovering the higher fees for another 30 days.
Okay, and if I'm understanding correctly, then what we're, it's um, basically having to make a choice between less funding to the department, if we want to have, if we want to have a difference in pricing, then, and, and therefore an incentive, then the only way to do that is for them to get less money for one than the other. And this is department where we're usually saying, we can't get enough money to run this the way we think we should. That's, that's my sense.
That is correct, the only other thing that could be done is again, it could be pulled out and we could take some of the other factors that Sheriff Saxon is, is discussing, um, such as cost of maintaining them in the, the shelter for a longer period of time. But we'd have to again, have a more robust conversation because it has to be, it has to pass a certain test to make a determination if it's a valid expense. Um, and again, I don't, I don't think we can do that on the fly, but his, his proposal is done in other jurisdictions. We would just need to again, look at it and make sure we could, we could do it legally.
And, and so if we, if we did this, we gave more time, a study is done, it comes back and supports doing something like that, aren't we starting over again?
You can just modify that one section. So what would, but if, if you were to move forward on it today, within 30 days, the entire fee schedule would be in place. At any time, you can bring back an individual item under that and modify it. So you would just be addressing that one specific item related to the, the dogs in this situation. And so when you were to modify this ordinance going forward, again, it would only affect that one area. The remainder that you approved today would still remain in effect.
Okay, thank you.
And Sheriff Saxon, I'm, I apologize, you had said another item besides the licensing, something that would be illegal according to our current ordinance.
Yes, and, and just to digress, Supervisor Luke Wyler, I appreciate your comment there. My intent was not to hold up this item, my intent was to merely make the board aware of some concerns that we had with regard to this. I, I agree with the county council, I do not want to hold this up. And, and at some point, I would like to be able to come back and bring some additional information forward in the future to be able to modify this if it is so the board's pleasure. Madam Chair, with regard to deleting the permits with regard to commercial sanctuary and hobbyist rancher permits contained in County Municipal Code 6.04.080, under dog permits, it specifically mentions each one of those permits and how every, everybody on there has to go to Animal Regulation Unit to get a permit and pay the appropriate fees. So by getting those fees, we would then have to change that ordinance.
So I, I would like to ask the, the C O, maybe county council to weigh in on this, because the way I would understand that, the new fees below that, in our backup material where it, it actually calls out the, the hourly rates for those. where it, it actually calls out the, the hourly rates for those um, animal control folks. Uh, would those permits then be billed at actual cost by hourly rate? All those ones that are called out in county code that we have to do, but we don't have a set fee for, would we just build those out? At the hourly rate?
I'll have to defer to Suzie. Uh, she's on the line. I'm not uh, familiar with this. Suzie?
And, and can we just be clear? We're talking about page four of eleven where we're talking about commercial permits.
Yes.
One to dogs, a hundred dollars a year and then proposed as delete.
Yeah.
And so all those, and then Dan, your supervisor Fraser, you're jumping down to the part below that just before auditor where it shows the individual hourly rates for those individuals. Okay. So I just want to make sure we're all looking at the right thing as we are enlightened by county council.
So I can tell you the way it's written and how it'd be interpreted. And then uh, we can ask Suzie what the intent was, but the way it's written is no. The answer is there would be no fee charged for that service. It would not go off the hourly rate because we are deleting it. Um, and so if we were to charge hourly rate, we would have to specifically under the fee section state hourly rate.
So where the sheriff is saying, hey, this doesn't fit our code. I'm curious what the thought process was to delete them in the first place. Was this perhaps an oversight?
So I'll, I'll jump in on that a little bit. Suzie Hawkins, Senior Financial Analyst, I'm in office. Um, I didn't work as closely with Craig and creating this and I don't have exact answers for that, but my assumption is going to be that Craig created, um, we sent questionnaires out to every county department. And for those that have responded and are included in this fee study, we calculated or Craig calculated fees based on the information that was provided back to him from those county departments. So these ones, when we're talking about the dog licenses, the altered versus unaltered, that was done, grouped them together because it doesn't take them any more time to license an altered dog versus an unaltered dog. And like Margaret was saying, we can't charge a higher rate for an unaltered dog when it doesn't take us any more time to do that. So that's, that's that piece. Um, when we get down into the kennel permits and the hobbyists, um, I'd have to dig back through everything that was provided to Craig, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say that that information for him to calculate a fee likely wasn't provided by the department and therefore was the assumption that if you're not providing me information on how to calculate that fee, then you don't do that anymore. And therefore we don't need that fee in our fee study.
And can I, I just want to come back again to make sure I understand when we're talking about, we, we can't say we're going to approve all of this as it's been submitted and was submitted the first reading, except the animal shelter. We can't do that because it's too significant a change to what we're approving. It would be starting over.
Correct. So just, just to kind of give you a little bit of a bigger picture for, for, because this will come up again multiple times. Um, ordinance is required two readings. The first reading, there can be changes made to them. Uh, so the board has the pleasure of making alterations and we can still consider that a first reading. There are times where the change is so significant, we will request this county council or staff that we do bring it back for a second first reading, just to make sure we memorialize exactly what the board wants. But if we have confidence that the board's making changes on the spot that are accurate, that is the first reading is complete and it will go to the second reading. At the second reading, we cannot make any significant changes. The only thing we can change are scribner errors, uh, typos, things that were misformatted. We can change all of that, um, but anything that has a substantive change requires again to move back to a first reading.
And so uh, what you were saying before was we could approve as is and simply these items come back before us. Like we still have other departments to review, so it could just be other changes.
Absolutely.
So then I believe the sheriff was saying that approving as is puts us in conflict with some statutory requirements. Are, are you able to speak into that? Are we, are we putting ourselves at risk of being non-compliant with regulations if we do this? That is something we should know about before we make a decision?
So, no, yes and no. Let me, let me rephrase that. If the, if there is a state regulation that requires us to collect fees or a federal regulation requires us to collect fees, that does not need to be memorialized in our fee schedule. It is a law, we will follow it. So the fact that it's being deleted here, we're not creating something that com- conflicts with it, um, will be okay. Now, it is a best practice to have them be consistent with what we're being asked to do on a federal and state level. So I would recommend that being brought back so that the sheriff can provide the actual amount. Um, and we can make it very clear going forward. But at this point, um, the sheriff is going to have to follow the state and federal law. So he will have to collect fees for items um, if it is required.
Thank you.
And I, I question really quickly for council. If we um, were to change this section where say from kennel permit application slash inspection down through the commercial portion um, and sanctuary permits. And just instead of saying delete, put billed at hourly rate. Would that be a substantial enough change to have to bring this back for another reading?
Yes, it would. If we put in comply with state law, it would not. That's what it's saying.
Unless state law doesn't actually have a fee, but only says that we have to provide the service, then we would be doing it for free.
Correct. Again, the recommendation would be to bring it back.
I reached out to Craig and he's going to zoom in to answer any questions.
Okay, great.
I do believe and Craig will um, address this when he gets in, but I do believe that the intent was any other service that any of the departments on here that are providing to the public that we can charge at the hourly rate. And that was the intent of adding their hourly rate to the um, fee study. With the note that says it'll be the actual hourly rate as updated and posted on January first of every year. So that way that we make sure that when we are billing for that hourly rate, that we're billing for the correct and most current hourly rate as to recover the most amount of our actual cost for service. Um, and essentially hopefully help eliminate us being in a position where we're barely recovering anything and it's costing us three times what we're recovering for those services.
And if I could just jump, go ahead. Oh, is that Craig?
Then, then that would make a lot more sense than when you're reading our county municipal code when it talks about payment of a fee. If we're including that as the hourly rate, then that would make a lot more sense now.
So.
But just to jump in, I apologize.
I'm, I was just going to ask you a question that maybe you were going to answer anyway. Um, if all these sections that say delete, and I guess maybe we would need Craig to clarify this. If we're only deleting the fee that's written there and, and billing that at an hourly rate, that would be different than if we're deleting that entire um, service. Yeah, it's uh, because there, and it doesn't seem clear to me because we are deleting the entire, and we're, I'll go back to the dog licensing, the entirety of altered one-year license, that entire license type is being deleted. So I don't think it's clear if um, if we're only deleting the fee, that would be different. And I think that um, we're gonna, I'm actually, I'm really glad that the, the sheriff brought this up. Would have been nice to know about it at our last meeting, but um, the, I think we do need to clarify that because we don't want to provide services. I mean, I, I don't think it would probably be that major for uh, our sanctuary permits probably don't come up a lot, but um, we don't want to provide those services for free.
Good morning, Craig.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. You have some insights for us?
I'm, I'm not sure why this wasn't on my calendar. Um, can you, can you point to the page specifically that you're speaking of in the packet?
I can jump in and just, this is Margaret and just give you just a reader digest. So the question is, is there certain items that are, are listed as delete? Was it the intent when this was listed as delete that the item would be deleted from the fee schedule? Or was it intended for that to be charged at an hourly rate?
Um, no, the deletes would be the fact that nothing was submitted by the department for those specific fees. Or there's a restructuring of the fees where we've combined things that before were separate. So that's why I was kind of trying to get to that page to see, I know you're talking about altered and unaltered.
It's three of eleven and four of eleven. Three of eleven is the altered, unaltered and four of eleven is the second item we're going to ask you about.
The hourly rate.
Do, do you know the number in the packet or?
Uh, it's six thirty-one of six eighty-seven.
Six thirty-one. Thank you. That, that'll get me there a lot faster. Six thirty-one. All right, so. Okay, and which, which specifically is it on there? Is it dog license or what?
I don't think we're as foggy about the dog licensing now.
I think it would be the next page that's more uh, or the very bottom of that page where we get into the, the kennel permit applications and inspections. And, and from there down to the um, sanctuary permits. Uh, Sheriff Saxon has informed us that those are are services that have to be provided because of code. So um, we can't delete those and we don't have a fee associated with them.
So does the code provide the fee?
I, I don't know that.
If you don't mind me just jumping in here, uh, Craig, on, on uh, Trinity County Municipal Code six point zero four point zero eight zero dog permits, it talks about each one of those uh, permits. And then it just talks about uh, providing the uh, the services and uh, payment of a fee. Uh, it says uh, upon receipt of an application and payment of a fee. So uh, a- and again, I, you weren't here, but I apologize for not being available at the last meeting where we were discussing all these things. Uh, but the permit uh, fees in there, uh, i- i- if, if we delete all those, are we now having to change the municipal code um, for the county dealing with those permits? Uh, or, or are they covered under the animal control hourly, hourly rates by staff members? Was the question that Supervisor Fraser uh, had posed.
Okay, so let, let me answer it in this way. The, the way we approached each of these fees was to request information from all departments on each of their fees on the existing ordinance timeline, what tasks have to be provided so that we could quantify a new fee. If this says delete here, my, my guess without digging into a bunch of my folders here is that there was no information provided on these specific fees. And so that they were posed for delete because there is no information provided. So if we actually need to have these, then I will need information from the departments on this. Or yes, you would have to go to a hourly charge for them and you would remove the delete and just say per hourly charges.
Right, so.
That's, that's something I wouldn't mind revisiting in the future so we don't hold this up any longer for.
All right, so to recap with county council, passing this portion as we pass the bulk of it today as desired doesn't put us at risk.
No, it just would mean for the period of time while we are looking at this that any, any permits, um, the fee would be charged at a rate of zero. So there would be no fee charged.
And actually, we would have thirty days to try to amend this where they would be charged the fee that is currently being charged, which would be in this. And then from that thirty days until we could pass another ordinance, there would be a time when somebody could apply for a kennel license for free.
Correct.
Well, I don't know. I think I would make a motion that we uh, we alter this fee schedule to say um, from kennel permit application in the animal control section through the end of the deletes to be changed to build at an hourly rate. And go ahead and.
If we're going to change it today, why don't you, would you consider adding to your motion to just go ahead and fix the difference between the?
I don't think, I personally, I don't think we can fix the difference between the altered, unaltered because there is no difference in time. I think we would have to maybe look at that.
That's true. That took another step. Okay.
So I, I would make a motion that we just change the deletes uh, in the lower section of animal control and change those to build at an hourly rate.
And, and that we can do and?
We'll, we'll have to bring it, we'll have to bring it back for a second.
Yes, that would be to make this the first reading with the alterations as discussed by Supervisor Fraser.
Well, damn, just so I'm straight, you're going from kennel permit down to?
Let's have a, oh, you're clarifying the motion. Go ahead.
Yeah. clarify you're going from kennel permit application inspection down to seven or more dogs altered?
Yes. Is that a second?
Sure.
Right now we, I, I realize that it's kind of, we want to get this done. But at the same time, I don't like the idea of passing something that we know has to be fixed. I think we're better off to wait two weeks to collect more fees and, and get it done correctly.
Question uh, for C O Garza, do you, are you aware of problems this will cause with departments who have been preparing to initiate this? They're, they're not going to have to stop processes that just have to wait a little longer to get these higher fees, most of them being higher fees?
Yes, it's just a, a delay.
And then the sheriff would still be able to bring back changes to the altered, unaltered and to this as a, an additional change in the future. And it would just be considered separately than the rest of this. So this basically puts us back two weeks with this recommendation. Okay.
I have another question for council. When we discussed this the first time, we added in another department that came, there was a portion that was done, I believe, in another department that said, hey, we're ready to jump in on this, which we combined. Could we pull out this one department and pass everything else today?
So it's written as one uh, ordinance? So no, because we would be making a significant change to the ordinance as written. If we are presented as individual department ordinance is yes, but the way it's written, we've got to keep it as one item.
And I question that on signi- just one second, Suzie. Uh, one second. I question that only because when we talk about significant changes, we're not, we're not changing any fees because that's to do with the public needing to comment and be a part of what we're discussing. We're removing for later conversation for them to be a part of that discussion and setting that aside. They're here now to be able to comment on what we've done two weeks ago and doing again today. Does that thinking not work?
So you're right, the, the main purpose of this is to make sure that individuals who um, wanted to comment knew that the appropriate comment period was the first reading. Um, and that nothing has changed between the first and the second reading that they weren't able to then have noticed that and comment on. Um, if you were to change this, it would deprive individuals who did, who, who thought after the first reading that it was going to go through as written and didn't come here today to comment on the removal. Um, granted, in this case, they're giving, me giving another opportunity to speak. But the reason it's written this way is because a lot of times it's just being removed and not brought back. So that would not, that would not necessarily give them all those opportunities or brought back in a form that they're not approving of. So that's the concept behind it. Um, you're right, I don't disagree with you that this would not be something that would negatively affect the public. But it is, it is the way the, the statute is written that if there's a significant change, which would include removing a section.
All right, fair. Thank you. Okay, Suzie, thanks for waiting.
Absolutely. I just wanted to add clarification that when we added building, we did bring it back for a second first reading. We added that between the very first time it went before you and the second first reading that you guys had at the last board meeting. So um, I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion or would somebody like to make a competing motion? All right.
I, I have something that really doesn't alter how I will vote on this, but it is related to this subject. Should I wait till after we vote on this and just?
Throw it out there.
So I think two things. One is to me, this is pretty clearly a process breakdown where the department, I would think, would have signed off on everything that was being submitted and yet clearly that was not the case. So I just ask as we move forward, I don't know what the process change is, but make sure that what we're seeing has already been blessed, if you will, by the department heads. Um, and the other is that I know we still have other, uh, we have now these changes out there as well as other departments. And I, I would like to have some sort of a guideline brought to the board, my, my personal view of when we can expect those. Because it's, I, I know it's one thing to say, and we're working on those others. I I know it's one thing to say, and we're working on those others, but working on them can be a one month, six month, or twenty four month process, and I think it would just be good for us to know because we talked about how financially strained the county is, we talked about how these fees have are very outdated and just seems like this should be a priority and we should know approximately when we can expect those, and that becomes a expectation of the department heads and Craig and and whoever else is working on.
All right, uh Ashley, you want to restate the item and pull forward?
Motion was to move forward with uh altering the fee schedule to say from the animal control section kennel to seven or more dogs altered where it says delete to move to hourly rate.
But the motion also includes uh waving first reading and making this the first reading.
And your second is good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter here?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Um we are on thirty minutes. So just so the public is aware, we do have a noon appointment to go into closed session. And uh we're not gonna get through the entire agenda before then, so we'll be coming out of closed session, will we report out on closed session and continue with the agenda? So um I was wanting to tackle three point six so that some people could go back to work, hoping we can get through that item in thirty minutes, so I'm gonna move to item three point six. Discuss and or provide direction to the Director of Transportation to plow to plow access to the county road for volunteer fire department who are adjacent to a county maintained road to be reimbursed by the County General Fund, approximately a hundred and fifty dollars per plowed access Director Caucus.
Uh before we jump into this Supervisor, our Chair talks, um could you let people know what time we'll be coming back out of closed session? I said, do you believe we had discussed that?
Well, it was two P M. when we first said we were gonna be live, but we're gonna stay with the two P M.
It will not be two P M. No, it would, my anticipation would be twelve thirty, but again, that's just a rough guess.
So um I'm gonna say one o'clock for certainty. All right, thank you. All right, Director Caucus, thank you.
Uh good afternoon, I guess, good morning. Uh Pano Skokas, Director of Transportation. There has been a request for the County Department of Transportation to plow the parking lots for the volunteer fire departments that they are adjacent to county public roads. Uh the transportation department can only spend gas funds on county maintained roads, those are public roads, and that's by the code by the State Controller's Office. Were added it every year and they have to see where that money is spent, so if we have to deviate from that and they have a finding, they can withhold funds against the county or the road fund has to be paid within, I believe, sixty days of the time that the money was spent. And that's again on state codes. What we have on the screen, it's a plow that we use, one of the small truck like the one that's shown on the screen or a small pickup truck. Those uh piece of equipment work very well on roads because they push the snow, we tilt the plow to one side. And as the speed of the truck goes by, they can move it to the side of the road. If you have to go to a parking lot, you can't pick up the speed, so the snow is going to be pushed forward most of the time. And even if we move it to the side, there is only so much place we can take it to because we have a large white parking lot. What would be more appropriate for something like that would be a loader tractor or a snow blower, we can move the snow farther away away from the driveways because the driveways only have so much space to put in the side. Then the other part would be that the berms or the piled up slow snow as you go through the fire department with uh equipment we have is going to get higher and we can't push it any farther. But a loader tractor can move that uh elsewhere, and it can come very close to the doors we we have issues with that. The other concern that we have is there'll be things in the parking lot that drivers are not aware of. Concrete steps or something or another, and we may hit them and break them, and then we'll be responsible for that, which we don't want to be responsible. Or we're going to damage a plow and then we won't, we will not be able to plow the rest of the roads. As you are aware, we have three types of roads, ones that we get priority one, priority two, and then priority three. Priority three, we don't get to them as often as we like to because we do not have the personnel or the equipment. We have allocated twenty people for operations and maintenance, we only have fifteen. Our equipment, it's old and it's uh very touchy sometimes, and that's that's something that I like to see, but that's the reality.
Thank you. All right, um questions from board members? Right, I will open public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any on, okay. Um no, you're not. Would you like to wait and speak as a department head? Or O E S? I'll give you more time, so let's go ahead and take a public comment and then we'll. I have no chat and no re- oh, no, yep. Steve?
Yes, I I would just like, this is Steve Renton from Coffee Creek Fire, we're part of making the original request. Um I'd just like to clarify that we are not asking for the parking lots to be cleared and uh we're only asking for the egress aprons, which in the case of Coffee Creek is about twenty six feet by forty feet. It's completely clear of obstacles because that's the uh path that our emergency response vehicles take to get to the street, which is about twenty six feet in front of the uh bay doors. So no problem with obstacles there, and we are not looking for uh clearance of the entire parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Um Steve, as uh the requesting party, I would like you to stand line uh following public comment in case there are other questions.
I'm happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. And um Director Simi, I wish that I would have had you speak before I had opened public comment, but would you speak now?
Thank you, Supervisors. Chairman Cox, Philip Simi, Emergency Operations Manager, Trinity O E S. Uh just wanted to give you guys a an update on where O E S is uh stands on this and what we have attempted and and some of the communication that uh has come forth. Back on December seventh, um I received an email from C A O Garza asking if there was O E S funds uh to purchase um equipment for Coffee Creek to be able for them to uh do this clearing on their own. So I have reached out to Coffee Creek to ask Steve if um what would be the best option for them, um if they're looking at maybe uh us trying to purchase a a blade for their uh the front of a vehicle. Um I'm aware that they have an extra, they have an extra truck that this could possibly be a uh an attachment for um or going in um and purchasing some sort of a snow blower for that area. Some of the um oppositions that came up on that, the uh the the idea of uh putting a blade on the truck could possibly increase the cost to the fire department for uh because it it changes the status of that vehicle, so insurance cost could uh could be a factor on that. Um also having people to be able to attach this piece of equipment on there. Having to have it left outside during the course of the months through this winter because the uh piece of equipment would not be able to fit inside their bays with this attachment on there. So we decided to look into the the snow blower option. As a lot of people up in that area, Coffee Creek and Trinity Center know that the snow is much different than it is down here, it's much wetter. Uh snow blowers are, can be very ineffective when it comes to that. So I tried to look for the most powerful unit that I could possibly find and uh learned that uh December is not a good time to buy snow blowers. A lot of the issues uh that came up with that uh mainly was that uh between uh southern southern Oregon, western Nevada and northern California, there was not one unit that would fit the criteria that they need in stock, um reaching out to uh even further out. Uh basically, the the last word I got was that if we were to order it now um for what they need, which would be a, like I said, the largest unit that's out there that Honda makes, that I felt would be their best fit. If we ordered it now, there a preorder, the estimated ship date would be September sixteenth of twenty three, so this is not an option for for this winter. And then it gets down to probably the hardest thing that's going to be to get this funded through O E S would be that uh the two major grants that I work with, um the Emergency Management Grant and the Homeland Security Grant. Um they have a lot of criterias on what you can purchase on these. Uh Emergency Management, for instance, uh if it's equipment that is going to be used in the case of a disaster or an emergency. So there's a fine line, I may be able to word this and and get past that. Um I reached out to my H uh Homeland Security Grant Representative this morning. Uh Homeland Security basically responding to or preventing a terrorist threat, so I'm not thinking that a snow blower is going to uh uh fit into that kind of realm, so just to kind of give you a an idea of what O E S has, you know, what I have been working on and what um uh where we're at, I've been in communication with uh with Steve, I've also been in communication with uh Trinity Center with Carol and um trying to work out the best realm, but for right now, as it stands with O E S, this is not a purchase that we would be able to make um this year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Uh just to get back on the snow blowers, I do have a unfortunately personal experience in those, I lived in Illinois for about eight years. And I did have a snow blower that was a two-stage for wet snow because the snow they get there, it's all wet. And they do work very well, I was able to push the snow up to twenty five to thirty feet uh one way or the other based on the winds. Uh they also have an electric assisted starter. So you can plug into the wall, you know, the wall plug in, and you can start it and you unplug it and you can proceed with it. It was a twelve horsepower, thirty inch by thirty inch snow blower and I cleared snow as high as thirty, thirty-five inches with it.
Okay.
What's what was the cost on that, do you know?
At that time, I think it was six or seven hundred dollars. Uh when I moved there, I got cut in a snowstorm and took me about two hours to shovel ninety feet of driveway. And then as soon as I finished, the city truck came by and they had me shovel for another hour until I took the berm outside of my driveway. And then the first thing I did again, I overreacted, I bought the biggest snow blower, twelve horsepower, uh six gears forward, two reverse, and I was able to clean the driveway in no time.
All right, so your comments lead us to the reason I asked Steve to remain available, and that's because um subsequent to putting this item on the agenda, which I requested and thank you for, um I also heard comment that maybe the only request was just please don't leave a berm, that that's difficult to get past, so Steve, would you correct accuracy on that uh understanding?
Uh the berm would represent a nearly impenetrable barrier. And it also makes snow blowing much more difficult, particularly if it, well, it gets packed, so it's very hard. But if the snow is more than a few inches on the apron, the vehicles don't do well, and there's a slight slope, so we would have difficulty putting them away if we could get them out, which when we had less than a foot uh in the last major snowfall, we really couldn't get them out through the snow.
Okay, thank you.
We do not leave berms on driveways, our drivers make sure that uh private driveways, uh fire departments or anything else do not have berms in front of them. We're making sure that that doesn't happen when we do plow the snow.
The public comment that we received four or six weeks ago was directly to do with they left a berm and made it difficult.
Okay, if that's, it may could be a new driver or something we didn't know about, but that's not our practice.
Okay.
Our practice, when I spoke with uh both supervisors yesterday and the superintendent, it was that we make sure that we clear the berm from all driveways as much as we can.
Okay.
Follow up question on that?
Please.
So I I I just want to make sure, so how are they doing that? Because I I can tell you on Lewiston Road, I've had to go out and shovel out in front of my driveway to get a berm out, and I I'm trying to picture them stopping in front of every driveway to remove that, so I.
I was told they swing the plows so they can move it off. Uh that that's what I was told, I have not seen them.
Okay.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
Is it possible to know how much the um snow blower that he found was, how much it cost? From, oh yeah.
How much was the snow blower that you found that's not available until September? How much did that cost?
Thirty seven hundred.
Okay.
And to um to uh answer just another little bit more of information, when you were giving me some specs on the on your unit, I'll race you for pink slips, because uh yeah, this is, this is a basically the two-stage thirteen horsepower. Um and one of the things that I that I meant, forgot to mention, it's one in one of the emails, and I believe that was from um from Carol was uh one of the other uh issues too is that the the amount of uh the distance that these can throw the snow, some of these aprons are forty feet, and so as you start working with this and you're throwing snow on top of s- snow, you know, it just makes it that much more difficult, you know, and then manpower is another thing too, do they have the manpower, what's my, one of my questions was that I wasn't able to get an email out this morning is, and maybe Steve can answer this, is uh the average age of some of these volunteers that are working in these areas? Rick, I know that you, I I have a lot of confidence that you'll be fine. But uh just some of the things to look at, and like I say, I have no problem with moving forward, I can start working with the with um the grants and to see if we can do something for this next year, and you know, I I believe that this would do it, but I even know that Trinity Center Chief Carol Fall, um she has a snow blower there and they don't really use it very often because it just doesn't um I'm not sure what the specs of it are, but it really doesn't seem to want to push the snow, that when it gets wet, it clogs up in the chute, and she said it just makes igloo blocks, is the way she put it, so. Um it says there's a lot of different um things we need to look at versus just, you know, working with the, working with Department of Transportation.
And I'm sorry, I I think I kind of interrupted with raising my hand, but I I was really just agreeing with you that I I do know that in many cases, the the average age of some of these fire departments is older and and that even with a powerful machine, it's not easy work to move that equipment in that snow. And uh so I think that's a very valid concern.
I have another question, sorry, I'm a problem solver. What about a quad with a plow on the front of it? Would that have enough power to push it? Like, I don't know if they have a quad or if they.
They really, they do, I kind of looked into this from my own situation, um just to be able to justify having a quad to my wife. The amount of power that it takes, you're talking quite a large unit, um and the fact that how much snow can they really push, you know, not knowing the not being, you know, not really doing a lot of research on that, honestly. You know, that kind of looked at these two options, and like I say, the blade uh seemed like a great option, except for the fact that Coffee Creek's apron can be very hard to maneuver a truck in and out of there. to maneuver a truck in and out of there, and the fact of being able to store it during the winter. So to answer your question, I could look into that, but I think that we're looking at a substantial amount of money to purchase a large enough unit and then put a blade on it versus, you know, putting it on a putting on a truck and knowing that we'd have enough power.
And as I understand it, that specifically the Coffee Creek Fire Department doesn't have room for additional equipment inside, but
Yeah, he said it would be stored outside through the winter. It would be unprotected because the fact that they and they, you know, putting this on and off is can be, you know, it may take a couple of people. So we're also looking at a manpower thing. So leaving it on through the winter months and leaving it outside could be, could result in some vandalism or anything like that.
So I have a question for Steve. If the board were to approve an allocation of the the needed funds out of the general fund, should you need to call upon the Department of Transportation to remove whatever snow and also for them to really receive the direction that berm can't be left, would that solve your need?
That seems sufficient to our current experience.
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion. Oh, go ahead. You have another question.
Go ahead, Panos.
Before we proceed to direct the Department of Transportation, it probably makes sense to have a private contractor with a tractor, with a loader to move that a lot better because trucks can only get so close to their door. If the driveway is 26 feet, there is no way for a truck to go around to get in front of the driveway. They don't have the capacity. We're pushing the snow. We can't push it towards their doors of the building. And if we have to back up to the building, it's going to be the length of the truck that's not going to be pushed out.
I have a question. We have three priorities of roads that get plowed. Does this change the priority of Coffee Creek jumping ahead of any of the other two categories?
Well, if we have to go to the fire departments first, yes, it does change the priorities. If we drive by them when we're close to them, it's a different story because you happen to be there. However, it's going to take us a lot longer to go back and forth trying to plow those driveways. And we can only get so close to the doors of the building because, again, we're pushing the snow. We can't go up against the door with a blade.
So Stephen, I'm going to jump in for one second. Stephen, past years, when help has been provided, how close to your door did they get?
I'm trying to think. There really hasn't been any residue left behind after the lot is cleared. And I can't differentiate in memory every instance where perhaps one of the locals who had time in a backhoe came through versus when a county truck came through maybe way too early in the morning for anybody to see it, and we just wake up to it. So I can't really speak to there being a push up against the door in any case, but I don't know how many times the county did that versus someone else. Also, I think instead of kind of speculating about these things, if we could just get on the ground and take a look at it, and I think it is maybe a little simpler than we're making it out to be in these hypothetical situations that we're posing here.
I'd like to make a comment in question. In regards to concerns of liability damages, was the board considering entering into an MOU, removing any liability to the county? And again, if these roads that are accessing, if not this fire district, other fire districts, there are concerns about damaging vehicles that are parked on a non-county road. So there's, I believe there's some areas that we need to review and maybe check with county council on what that liability would be for consideration.
That's a question I was going to ask a panelist. Are the are these buildings directly adjacent to a county road? I mean, are we talking just to to have an apron that goes right to the county road? Or are we going an apron to a private road to a county road?
According to the staff report and the request was for fire departments that they're adjacent to a county maintained road. We cannot get off the county maintained road. Otherwise, we have to plow the road to get to the fire department. The other clarification from the comment before me was that we have never plowed any fire department driveways. I checked with several people who've been at the county for a long time. They said, no, this is not our practice. That's what I was told.
Well, it might not be a practice in the office, but it happens.
Okay.
I know that we actually, I was, I was at the Southern Trinity Volunteer Fire Department Board Meeting a week or so ago, and we had people from the public asking, hey, why isn't the county plowing the driveways for the fire department? They've always done it in the past. Well, the short answer there, Southern Trinity has two of their own plows to do it theirself. That's another question. And I don't know if it would be something that Coffee Creek and Trinity Center would be interested in looking into. I know that Southern Trinity Volunteer Fire Department has one plow that at one point in its life belonged to Trinity County. And then I don't know all the exact details, but I believe the county gave it free of cost to Southern Trinity Health Services to clear their medical facility parking lots. And then they gave it to the volunteer fire department as long as the fire fire department would clear the clinic parking lot because they didn't have anyone to drive it. So that would be something that I'm, if Trinity County has a pile, a fleet of plows that are, we can't use because they don't meet CARB requirements. What's stopping the county from giving one of those plows that doesn't meet CARB requirements to those, one of those fire departments and letting them do it theirself?
Well, we do have two plows that they do not meet CARB requirements in Southern Trinity County. However, we are allowed to use them during emergency for snow plows. There are two trucks sitting at the Ruth, you know, at the Ruth yard that we can't use for anything else. They're perfectly good trucks, but because of the emissions, we can't use them. But under emergency conditions, you can use them to plow snow. And that's all that we're allowed to use them for. So we're don't have enough plows as is. So using those two trucks that they are 20, 30 years old, and they're not allowed to use for anything else, but they could be used for snow plowing. And that's what we're using in that area.
So could one of those be moved from Ruth to North County?
Well, we need them in the
You need them both.
area.
And I don't, I mean, I don't know what you have for equipment right now, but when upgrading equipment and you would, county council would definitely have to be involved in it with all the auction requirements and stuff. But if you have a pickup that's being replaced, that can be given to the fire department with a plow on it, there, there has to be ways that we can get around this. And then yeah, without
The other option is to have a contractor with a tractor
Yes.
loader. They can come by and clean it up. They come next to the doorways of the building. Because the tractor with a loader can go very, very close compared to what the trucks can do, and they're pushing it. And they can only push it so much.
So I'm looking at the clock. I'm going to interrupt our conversation, and we will resume this conversation at 1:00 when we come out of closed session. So we're not going to be able to solve this item right now. And I need to read the items. And we have counsel that's going to be logging in in two minutes that we are, I assume, paying by the hour. So I'm going to be very cautious about that or conscious of it. So I'm going to thank you. Enjoy your lunch. We'll see you back at 1:00. I'm going to read the closed session item. 4.1 Government Code Section 54954.5C Conference with Legal Counsel Initiation of Litigation Number of Cases One. Item 4.2 Government Code Section 54954.5B Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Address 101 Memorial Drive, Weaverville, California. Agency negotiator Letty Garza and Margaret Long. Negotiating party to be determined. Under negotiation, price and terms of sale and payment. Item 4.3 Government Code Section 54956.95 Liability Claim. Number of Cases One. Name of Claimant Elizabeth Johnson. Agency claim against Trinity County. And with that, do we have any public comment on closed session?
I have no raised hands, no chat.
All right. We will adjourn until 1:00.
Are we adjourning or are we still?
We're adjourning.
We're going into closed session.
We're going into closed session.
Okay, it is 1:02. Sorry for the two-minute delay. And we are coming out of closed session to finish open session items. I would report out that direction was given to staff on one item. We were not able to accomplish all three. So we will go back into closed session after we finish the remainder of the posted agenda. We are at item 3.6, continuing the conversation that we were having with director caucus and fire department concerns about snow. And so we are going to resume that now. We have already announced the item, had initial discussion, taken public comment and closed that. We've brought it back to the board and we were at the point, I believe, where supervisor Frazier was engaged in conversation with director caucus.
Ashley, do you know if the fire chief is on Zoom?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I was actually done with my questions that I would, I had asked about the availability of county plows that were out of date. And it sounds like we don't have any at the time.
Okay.
Let me, sorry to interrupt. At lunchtime, I was able to speak about some of the concerns you had or some of the items you brought up. And especially when a snow plow was given to a fire department or another entity. And I was told, yes, that happened. They gave a road department piece of equipment to another entity. And then we happened to have a road audit and the auditor found out that it was not sold. And the general fund had to pay for it because road fund equipment cannot be given at any, for anyone. So it has to be sold at an action. So even if we had some spares to give, we couldn't do it. And that's what happened on that note. The other part was the driveways. My previous conversation with the superintendent was that as they plow on driveways, they try not to leave a berm. However, but if there are two driveways, I just across from each other or close by, they can swing back and forth. But they're trying not to leave a berm. We don't clear them. So I stand corrected for that. So, and they said in fire departments, they tried to go out of their way to make sure there is not a berm. That's what I was told during lunch, lunch break.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is actually for Steve and then probably comment back. But their director caucus had recommended actually that if the county wanted to use general funds to assist in this situation, that that be used for a private contractor that might be available to come and do that work. My question to you is, are you aware of anyone that you could get to do that if we had the funds available to, to do that?
I don't believe there's anyone local in the northern part of the county.
Thank you.
So Steve, I want to ask you a really direct question here. If I were to make a motion right now, what would you most like to see that motion included?
Authorizing the episodic $150 for clearing the egress, not the parking lot, to the firehouses in the snow-impacted areas. And also, not as a motion, but just as a suggestion for the considerations going on here. Even if we don't achieve a complete rhetorically beautiful solution today, any incremental progress that we can make in removing some, if not all of the snow, from our egress will mean that much less time that we have to delay to clear whatever remains instead of the entire apron in order to respond to an emergency. And simply, if the county drivers were to swing wide a couple of times as they do the road that this egress is attached to, we'd be better off. Thank you, and I'm sorry I was editorializing for a moment there.
Yep. You're great. All right. Go ahead.
So we could rectify this without spending any money if we just kind of asked director panels to swing wide in those situations. And the other question I had is, at the $150 billing rate, is that only while they are up there plowing the road because it's a priority? Say they're not up there because it's, it's not a priority. How do we, how do we rectify that? And are we setting up a truck just to do something for the fire station at an excessive cost well above the $150?
The $150 is for them to clear a fire station that's adjacent to a county road that they just have cleared.
Only?
Only if it's next to the road that we just cleared. If they have to go up for a special trip or they have to go out of their way, that's going to be time and materials, again, based on the recommendation of the state controller.
So that would seem unaffordable to me.
And the $150, it's not per year, it's each time they go to.
Yeah, I think that's, especially since you're not going to be there all the time. We don't have 100 plows, so it's not like they're always doing it. It would more than likely change the priority of things. If you needed to be up there more often than you are now just to do this, I think it would become a financial burden in a way to, to the county.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're getting into a lot of discussion now. I'm going to put a motion on the table and then we can talk about that and go from there. My motion is going to be that we authorize funding to come from the general fund for emergency purposes when the Coffee Creek or Trinity Center fire departments need their egress, not their parking lot, cleared. And that there would be direction within that to please try to avoid any berms that may get created in the process.
Would you be willing to?
I have a second. Oh, you want me to change it?
Yeah, I was pointing if you would be willing to change that to snow-impacted fire stations.
Absolutely. Rather than making it specifically for just those two, if they are adjacent to a county road. Yes.
Okay, so I.
Can we also, excuse me, can I?
Okay, it is 1:02. Sorry for the two-minute delay. And we are coming out of closed session to finish open session items. I would report out that direction was given to staff on one item. We were not able to accomplish all three. So we will go back into closed session after we finish the remainder of the posted agenda. We are at item 3.6, continuing the conversation that we were having with Director Caucus and Fire Department concerns about snow. And so we are going to resume that now. We have already announced the item, had initial discussion, taken public comment and closed that. We've brought it back to the board. And we were at the point, I believe, where Supervisor Frazier was engaged in conversation with Director Caucus.
Ashley, do you know if the fire chief is on Zoom?
I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I was actually done with my questions that I would, I had asked about the availability of county plows that were out of date. And it sounds like we don't have any at the time.
Okay.
Let me, sorry to interrupt. At lunchtime, I was able to speak about some of the concerns you had or some of the items you brought up. And especially when a snow plow was given to a fire department or another entity. And I was told, yes, that happened. They gave a road department piece of equipment to another entity. And then we happened to have a road audit and the auditor found out that it was not sold. And the general fund had to pay for it because road fund equipment cannot be given at any, for anyone. So it has to be sold at an action. So even if we had some spares to give, we couldn't do it. And that's what happened on that one. The other part was the driveways. My previous conversation with the superintendent was that as they plow on driveways, they try not to leave a berm. However, but if there are two driveways, I chase across from each other or close by, they can swing back and forth, but they're trying not to leave a berm. We don't clear them. So I stand corrected for that. So, and they said in, fire departments, they tried to go out of their way to make sure there is not a berm. That's what I was told during lunch, lunch break.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is actually for Steve and then probably comment back. But their Director Caucus had recommended actually that if the county wanted to use general funds to assist in this situation, that that be used for a private contractor that might be available to come and do that work. My question to you is, are you aware of anyone that you could get to do that if we had the funds available to, to do that?
I don't believe there's anyone local in the northern part of the county.
Thank you.
So Steve, I want to ask you a really direct question here. If I were to make a motion right now, what would you most like to see that motion included?
Authorizing the episodic $150 for clearing the egress, not the parking lot, to the firehouses in the snow-impacted areas. And also, not as a motion, but just as a suggestion for the considerations going on here. Even if we don't achieve a complete rhetorically beautiful solution today, any incremental progress that we can make in removing some, if not all of the snow from our egress will mean that much less time that we have to delay to clear whatever remains instead of the entire apron in order to respond to an emergency. And simply, if the county drivers were to swing wide a couple of times as they do the road that this egress is attached to, we'd be better off. Thank you, and I'm sorry I was editorializing for a moment there.
Yep. You're great. All right. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we could rectify this without spending any money if we just kind of asked Director Panos to swing wide in those situations. And the other question I had is, at the $150 billing rate, is that only while they are up there plowing the road because it's a priority? Say they're not up there because it's, it's not a priority. How do we, how do we rectify that? And are we setting up a truck just to do something for the fire station at an excessive cost well above the $150?
The $150, it's for them to clear a fire station that's adjacent to a county road that they just have cleared.
Only?
Only if it's next to the road that we just cleared. If they have to go up for a special trip or they have to go out of their way, that's going to be time and materials, again, based on the recommendation of the state controller.
So that would seem unaffordable to me.
And the $150, it's not per year, it's each time they go to.
Yeah, I think that's, especially since you're not going to be there all the time. We don't have 100 plows, so it's not like they're always doing it. It would more than likely change the priority of things. If you needed to be up there more often than you are now just to do this, I think it would become a financial burden in a way to, to the county.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're getting into a lot of discussion now. I'm gonna put a motion on the table. And then we can talk about that and go from there. My motion is going to be that we authorize funding to come from the general fund for emergency purposes when the Coffee Creek or Trinity Center fire departments need their egress, not their parking lot, cleared. And that there would be direction within that to please try to avoid any berms that may get created in the process.
Would you be willing to?
I have a second. Oh, you want me to change it?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you would be willing to change that to snow-impacted fire stations versus?
Absolutely, rather than making it specifically for just those two. If they are adjacent to a county road, yes.
Okay, so I.
Can we also, excuse me, can I, go ahead? Can we also recognize the fact that we need to be careful of any damages that we might incur? If there's any?
And that if any damages are accidentally incurred in the process, that the fire departments would not hold the county responsible.
And again, I'm not sure how that fits in with legal counsel.
We could draft an agreement with indemnification in that, so that's possible.
Okay.
We need a second.
Just a second.
Well, an indemnification agreement would say that if we're acting, we're, we're doing this on your behalf, any damages to our, you know, to our property, to your property, or third-party property would be responsibility of the fire district. That would be covered under an indemnification agreement.
All right. Would that include damage to a county vehicle? Because if the snow is higher than a step or something they have on the way that we hit and broke the plow, and we may not be able to get parts for the next week or two, who's going to pay for that?
Yes, so that we do as a county have a pretty standard mutual aid agreement, which it, which does have indemnification. It essentially says, we're doing this on your behalf and therefore we are for cost or no cost. But we are asking you to assume the liability for anything that happens to your property, our property, or a third-party's property. So we could get that done, yes.
So I guess.
We're at discussion, yeah.
That brings me to another question. Say something did happen to the plow and we were down for two weeks, which would seriously affect the rest of the county. And you know better than I would, what would it cost to fix that perhaps? And how much damage monetarily would that due to a volunteer fire department?
Well, again, I don't know how much damage to the plow, plow costs depending what we damage. If it's a little blade, it's a piston, it's a larger piece of the plow itself and how long it take to take those, get those parts if they're not available to us. I've been having problems getting the hoist pistons for about two, three weeks at a time rather than just going to the shop and get them.
I, I would just like to get us back to a space where we're thinking about, how often does this actually happen? How often is it a huge problem? And prioritizing the fact that if there's a 911 call in the Trinity Center Coffee Creek area and a fire truck can't get out, we're actually in essence talking about money over somebody's life.
Oh, well, we have, right now, we don't have to worry about that because they can't make a 911 call.
Exactly.
One of the issues I have is I don't think that, I know, and I appreciate Director Kokis for his trying to perfectly play by the rules, but I'm, and we've only heard from Trinity Center. We haven't heard from Coffee Creek, correct? Or other way around. A 26 by 40 easement doesn't cost $150 to plow. A parking lot, I could understand, especially if you had parking dividers, concrete barriers, all the fun stuff that's involved with a parking lot would cost $150 to plow. But we're talking about the time it takes to drive even slowly, 40 feet twice, maybe three times. So at an hourly rate, that would be incredibly a lot. I don't know. It, it seems to me that what we've got into now with this discussion, even the motion that's on the table, we're subjecting the fire department to way more cost possibly than the issues they're facing right now. I mean, if we took a plow in there, if the plow somehow did have some kind of damage, the fire department's responsible to pay for that. I mean, they're better off to deal with it theirself. What we have is the fire departments have come to the county asking for some assistance. And it was, first, it was just, hey, when you're going by, could you push some of the snow out? And I appreciate the fact that, yeah, those road funds have to be spent for county roads. But at the same time, you could probably just go wide a couple of times. And so I don't know. I, I really, I struggle with this. I think it's, we've got way too into the weeds here. Honestly, I think this is something that probably shouldn't even come to the board. I think this is something that the volunteer fire department should have talked to the guy driving the plow.
So the reason it came to the board is because those conversations did happen offline. And it kind of ended the same way that it's feeling right now. And it was just decided, I spoke with C O Garz about it, and we said, all right, then let's just have the conversation.
And then the other issue that I would raise that, I don't know, would be something for council and C O to look into, what's the possibility of just including that 40-foot section of, into a county easement and call it a priority two or priority three road?
That is doable.
And if the volunteer fire department would be willing to say, okay, this is a county easement, then we no longer have these issues and it's a county road to the doors of their building. And then we can pay for it with road funds.
Correct, that would be a solution.
All right.
Where were you a month ago?
I will make a secondary motion that we agendize this for a future meeting to discuss creating easements on, at those impacted fire stations and make their, their ingress, egress routes of county road.
Anybody want to second that?
I will second that.
But I have a question related to that, and what would that require? I, I'm thinking of the fact that this started back in November, December, and we've had 50 feet of snow or something like that up there that they've been dealing with. While this has been kicked around, and if this is going to take until next winter, I'd like to understand that.
The process of obtaining an easement is not going to take an extended period of time as long as we have a proper legal description written of the area. I, I see a look on Director's face that I would like to ask him to comment on as well because maybe some delay in terms of either funding or in terms of resources that I don't want to overlook. But from a legal perspective, it, we, we do easements on property all the time. So that's not going to be an extensive delay. It would. Yeah, yes, it would likely would go, well, I'm not even sure it would need to go to the planning commission. It could, I think it can come straight to the board, but it would come to the board in the form of an easement.
Many, many issues when you have a driveway to a fire department. Other driveway, just the one that's going to their doors, making it a county road easement. All of a sudden, all the maintenance or any issues that are with that driveway would become part of the road department when they're part of the fire department. That's why I have the separation of the easements between their driveways and the road itself. Sure, you can make that, but it's going to create some issues. And I can tell you that because we'll not be able to give you the same care as we do a road. And it will be up to the needs of the roads at the time. And that driveway may not have a higher need based on another road. So I don't believe driveways to facilities should be part of the maintained miles because it's designated for roads. And it may even run with issues with the state controller when they're looking at their maintained miles to see if that driveway can be part of the maintained miles. I never heard it before.
And when, and when you say maintenance, then what you're saying is if that was county easement, then everything to do with that space, resealing, fix, all that would become, okay.
Everything, everything that has to maintain, maintaining that driveway. And that's not something we do, nor do have the capabilities of doing.
Panos, just for clarity, it appears that we're talking about plowing, here's the front door of the, where the trucks come out of the fire station. Here's that we're talking about plowing this way and this way and this way. It would seem to me that to leave no berm or very little berm, you would need to plow from opening up the doors out to the street, not this way. Because you're gonna leave a berm somewhere or another.
You're absolutely correct. Even if they drive the truck and they try to back things out, you have to be far away from the, from the doors. So if you're inside the doors and you pushed it out, that would be the best way of removing the snow. However, we have to back up to the doors and trying to push it out. Some areas may be able to go from the side, but other areas, we may not be able to go from the side to push it as close to the door as possible.
But even backing up, you still have the length of the truck that you're not actually getting plowed.
You do have the length of the truck that's going to go through there. And again, we're pushing the snow, we're not lifting it and moving it. And the snow moves a lot easier if we have some speed behind that pushing of the blade at least five, 10 miles an hour versus a very slow the speed that we go through the driveways. Like I said, we can do it, but it's not going to be as perfect as they like it. And the $150 an hour, it's that equipment plus people's rates, overhead rates included, meaning the retirement, their, everything else that goes along with the salary, it's not just a salary. And we have rates for the vehicles.
So you're, maybe we've misunderstanding then. It says approximately $150 per plowed access, but what you really mean is per hour?
No, per time we go there, each time we go.
So you do mean that.
Three times. If we had to plow it three times in a season, then it's going to be $4.50. And that's a loaded rate for both the equipment and the operators.
And can you tell me based on how, how much time you think that's going to take?
Depending on the location, some of them are going to have a larger area, others are going to have smaller. How much noise, how easy it's to get in and out.
So that's the approximate.
That's an approximate. We had to come up with something that looked at the worst case and then looked at the best case, and then we averaged it.
Seems like we're making a lot out of this. I think we're making a mountain out of molehill here. Let's bring it back for discussion, but honestly, I don't think having road department trucks in the driveway of a volunteer fire department is a very smart thing for this county to do because of the cost. And I think it's not that smart of a thing to do for the volunteer fire department. One thing could happen to those trucks, and you could break a volunteer fire department. You know, pieces and parts and things for trucks are very expensive. And considering that truck may be down for two or three weeks, it would hurt all the other parts of the county that would be getting service during that time. So there, to me, there needs to be a much simpler solution than the one we've all presented here. It seems to be just enormous compared to the small problem we're trying to solve.
You're, you're correct. And during the snow season, as you well know, we run seven days a week. We start at six in the morning and we go while it's daylight. And we go seven days a week. So those people are working hard and later in the day, they may be tired. So it's going to be a little difficult for them to be more diligent in tight spots, that they're not a typical road or they can move forward.
Just, I'd like to kind of chime in a little bit. I totally understand, you know, how much we want to support the fire departments. And I am familiar with the state and federal funding that Panos has to work with. I've worked with it for 23 years when I was HHS director, and they are very stringent on how those funds can be used. I think what he's proposing as far as charging is, in my opinion, the only option we have because he does not have the funds to support what they are asking. We have to be really careful on how we do spend those state funds that we receive. So I would just be careful. We don't want to ask him to do something that's not allowed. But yet I do understand and respect the need to make sure our first responders have a quick access to, to get out and respond if they have to. But it's a challenging issue, I get. But at the same time, without the proper funding, they don't have the, the means to do what they, what they are being asked to do.
Do we, do we even have the legal right to go and do that?
To go?
Off of county road onto volunteer fire department property?
Well, as he's, as he's presented, he's provided a rate on what it would cost for them. Because again, this is not only equipment, but staff time. It's, and it's basically based on that fully loaded rate that we always work on. So it's, it really is unfortunate that we're having this lengthy conversation, but yet there's a lot to it that we need to be careful.
But the memorandum of understanding would be in place so that if a fire department did want to participate, they would sign that, and that would allow them, if this was approved, the funding to make it happen and so forth.
I agree, yes.
And, and then I don't know if it would need to be in a motion or can just be part of a practice. But in some way, it seems like what we want to say is make a best effort that minimizes the risk of safety to individuals' equipment or infrastructure. And basically, we're saying, we don't expect you to go in and clean every single inch of this. We're trying to make sure we can save lives, and we don't want to take risks that would hurt a building, hurt a piece of equipment, or hurt somebody.
Right.
I don't know if that needs to be built in or if that's just.
I think so. I, I, and I do know, and there's been past practice where it may have been allowed. You know, I do know Director Kokis has, has spoken to his staff and has, and they have expressed their thoughts on it. And again, he's representing the department based on what he's heard and learned. And, you know, and I, I support that. And I just want to make sure we understand the issue regarding the funding that he is responsible for. So just wanted to touch on that.
So I'll have one more thought, and it's just to do with, I don't know if this is even viable, but when we were putting the onus on then that fire department, if something should break, what is the possibility that we would just say, well, then the general fund is gonna, is gonna take that because we can't expect a little volunteer department?
That is absolutely, yes, that would be my thought as well. Because, you know, as we know, we do our best to support the all fire districts because again, respectfully, they are all volunteers practically. So whatever we can do in the general plan to support them, I totally support that.
So I would like to amend my motion to include that the general fund would support and, and take the responsibility for the MOU that he, he needs.
I, I'm okay with that and welcome any language that you recommend about what I said earlier.
So what I'm understanding you to say is that we would not have indemnification for the purpose of repairs to equipment? So you'd specifically remove that from any indemnification language?
Well, I'm not asking to remove it. It's kind of funny because it's gonna, in my mind, it's gonna run full circle. And we're going to have that indemnification, but the general fund is going to provide that. So if I'm saying I'm going to pay myself, do I even have to say it? I don't know. It's just that that covers the Department of Transportation to know it wouldn't come out of their budget. If there was a problem, it would come out of the general fund.
It was not going to come out of their budget, though. It was gonna come.
It was gonna come out of the fire district.
That's what I mean. All, all I'm saying is, the reason he's asking for this in the first place is say, it can't come out of the DOT. It's gonna have to come from the fire department. I'm saying, okay, it's not gonna come out of the fire department, it's gonna come out of the general fund. So now we're back to a county thing where it won't come out of the DOT, it'll come out of the general fund.
So from, from a county perspective, we do want to check with Trindell, our insurance carrier, because for any property loss or injury, they have our coverage on it. As we have to confirm that they can include this under our policy. Otherwise, it would come directly out of general fund. And let's say somebody were to be killed during this process, that would be millions of dollars. So I do want to make sure that we have our insurance company confirm that even if we go on private land, that they would still cover it.
So all the better reason to have gotten to this point, because what if that scenario would have happened to the fire department?
Well, I'm assuming they, their insurance would cover it. But, but yes, it is a, it would be a huge hit on a small district. And frankly, a huge hit on a county, it's a lot of money. So we do want to make sure we have that conversation with Trindell before we, before I can recommend that as an option. I, I understand what you're asking for. So if, if that's your direction, I, I could write up an agreement that had the appropriate language. I just want to make sure before I get authority from you to do so that we've double-checked.
Well, it seems like every time we start into more direction, we find more pieces of information go, okay, wait a second. All right, I'm gonna ask one more question. What is the possibility, I don't know if Steve, you're still there, that the fire, does the fire department carry insurance for such things to where if they did have the MOU, it wouldn't sink a small department?
All public entities are required to have insurance, yes.
That would cover this type of?
I, I can't answer for them. I don't, I don't represent them, I don't speak for them, but, but they are required to have it. I don't know what levels they have it at.
Yeah, I know. I think we could go into the deepest weeds we could ever imagine trying to get into insurance coverage with volunteer fire departments and still never get anywhere. Really, I don't think there's any way we can get where we want to go at this point personally. I think that, I don't know, I. I think that, I don't know, I I think we're going to beat our head against this wall for a long time if we I just don't see a way we can come to an end of this discussion.
Well, if I may, so I, I think there is a way forward. If we, if we put forward a motion as was described and we can make sure we have all the right language where we vote. And it includes that based on confirmation that our insurance will protect, will, will, will cover the county for work on the private property as indicated by all this, then we're kind of covering all the bases all the way around. The MOU could have something that basically makes sure that the fire department knows, hey, you're supposed to keep these clear. So if we hit something that you left in the parking lot that's not supposed to be there, that's a problem for you. If it was clear and we ran into something because we were reckless or whatever, then that's up to us. And, and I just keep coming back to whatever our rules and regulations and processes were before, we've been doing this in the past unofficially. Nobody's died, including nobody died because we couldn't get out of the fire stations. And, and here we are going over and over and over and over again on this. And it just seems like, I, I understand and I appreciate trying to protect us from ourselves. Let's not approve something that we haven't thought through what the issues are. But it, to me, it seems like we have overcomplicated, we have thought this through enough and, and we have a solution. And it can always be a better solution later. But we've already gone through most of the winter without addressing this problem.
So would you like to continue this on?
No, I'd like to vote.
All right, so let me just touch on what you just said, I don't want to go into the weeds much further than this. Say our plow truck hits a boulder in the parking lot. And we said, you shouldn't have left that in there, fire department. The fire department says, we didn't put that there, that rolled down the hill and now it's there. Where do we go? You know, and I think of, I don't want to think of the worst case scenario, but say someone, accidents do happen, as the pitcher just said, from a professional rock company, they've left two pieces of equipment underneath the slide that it's ruined both of them. So things, no matter how prepared, how good, how thorough you are, things out of your control happen. And we need to take into consideration all of the above and not hope that the volunteer fire department has enough insurance to cover a death case, hope the county doesn't get involved in that. Seems to me if we're opening ourselves up to a lot of liability here, that more than likely won't happen, but could. And the could part gets you. And that's the part that worries me. I love to see all the fire departments plowed, everything be perfect. This is not a perfect world like that. Something happens, we will be sued. The truck could break down, other districts could be hurt, it just seems like we're just?
So are you suggesting that we not move forward and try to help the fire department?
Yes, I am saying that we continue on the way we have been, we've had no deaths as supervisor Lutwiler just said from the department, volunteer fire department, nor have we had any incidences. My suggestion would be for the Department of Transportation to swing wide, making the path as clear as they can. And then, you know, similar to what we do in Douglas City, have volunteers clear the the pathway for the trucks to get out with their own manpower if possible. And that way, we're, we're out of the whole situation, we don't have to go through any of the liability.
Think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we may be missing that they're not willing to just swing wide. They're either going to, they're going to stay on the road or they're going to plow the egress at cost.
Swing wide while we're in the road and partially in the road right away, it's not a problem. Just getting into third driveways. If there is enough room, we'll go through and clear it as much as we can. So we're not going to leave a berm and also make sure we can get with our plows to push it down the road as much as we can in the driveways. But getting inside farther in and trying to move that snow, that's where we have the issue.
Steve, if you're online and you heard what Dr. Cauca just suggested, is that acceptable?
Any incremental aid that yet is going to be acceptable.
All right. It's okay, yeah. So I'm going to ask Supervisor Lutwiler if he wants me to continue with my motion or withdraw it.
I would like to see you continue, because if it doesn't pass, then we're hearing that a swing wide can happen without us issuing a policy. So if that way, we either are voting to do it more thoroughly or we're voting to do it as well as we can within the allowed current policies and regulations and protections and all that. So either way, it's better than it was before we started this conversation.
It is. However, I'm, I'm no longer comfortable with my motion, I'm going to withdraw it. And so if you want to make one, I just took it off the table, you may do so.
Can I ask why?
Because I'm frustrated that this whole thing even happened. And my first priority is that 911 calls go forward quickly. I want to see Trinity County just work together and figure it out. I feel like we've done that for years. This has taken hours to talk through, much less weeks of little intermittent conversations everywhere. And I, I guess just fundamentally, I feel bugged. I think that we need to prioritize life and stop fussing over who went on, how much of this, for what cost of that and who, I just getting very transparent right now.
Well, if, I'll support the withdrawal and, or you withdraw and I don't, because I don't have to. But if, if we are moving forward that there will be a best effort within the allowed current regulations and everything else to swing wide, do whatever and clear, we can always bring this back. If it fails, then that brings up a whole different set of issues about how it gets readdressed. So I can, I can work with that.
All right. So since we didn't put a motion on the table and it was here for, I guess it was?
Do have a motion on the table.
Oh, you do, sorry.
And it was seconded by Supervisor.
Could you read that back, please?
My motion was to create the, to make these into county roads.
Oh, right, sorry Dan.
I apologize, yeah.
It's part of our, our maintained road system.
And we can neither vote on that right now. I, I would like to agendize that for a future and actually have that discussion. And it could, we could, at that point, we can go through the details of what that entails and we could, so, but I would like to have that discussion.
That I would be in favor of, bringing that back and having thorough information?
My motion was to agendize it for a future meeting. I didn't put a date on that, but I think I would like to amend my motion to say, well, we're already probably pretty well booked, so let's say the first meeting in March, to agendize that and have that conversation.
You want to adjust your second?
Yes. That's fine, but I'm fine with that.
Okay. Yep.
So in the interim, we would stay with Supervisor Lutwiler's, we'll do the best we can with what we have, kind of motion. That'd be fine, yeah, great.
Can I? I just, when I think about how this county has made it through all of the years up until this moment in time, I think about all of the times during the 1964 flood when general citizenry was deputized because they needed to be, when vehicles were left on the other sides of slides with car keys in them in case the neighbor needed to use them. And all of the times that people did things that were maybe not necessarily on the books, but they were done so that we could survive and live and thrive in a region that is incredibly rugged and rough. And I just hope that that spirit still is alive within the individuals who, who work for the county and who volunteer on the fire department. And that we could see a path forward to where in Trinity County, we still get things done. I'm not suggesting anyone break any rules, but I know that there's a grit in all of us that keeps us living here. And it's in that grit and camaraderie that we, we get things done when we need to. So the swinging wide when this necessary, sounds like a great, a great way to deal with this. And I would just hope that relationships would continue to build to where we would find a way that our county would be able to look into the eyes of our volunteer fire departments and say, we're here to help. And that our volunteer fire departments could look back into the eyes of the county and know that they were there and that they were also willing to help. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, well said. Both February meetings have room as of right now.
And my motion was for the first meeting in March.
I was just letting you know that February's are. Do you want to bump it sooner?
No, I, I think we still have more stuff that's coming up for February. First meeting in March is soon enough.
We're on it and she's getting ready to read it back and we're going to call for the vote.
Okay, we're going to continue the meeting to the first meeting of March, or the discussion to the first meeting of March.
It wouldn't be continued because it's going to have to be reagendized to discuss creating, making these into county road portions to the fire department. So we'll just say there's going to be an agenda item in March. And if I have to get with you or Suzie to come up with language and I'll do that.
Okay, so that would be direction given to staff to agendize it, so that we just need consensus, not a formal motion. I see three nods, so this would have no motion made, item fails for lack of motion.
Perfect.
Hey, thank you, all right, moving on to, thank you Director Cauca, appreciate your help. All right, item 3.4, receive an update from County Council regarding Brown Act changes for 2023, no fiscal impact, counselor.
Thank you. Steve, I actually have a PowerPoint. Good afternoon, board. I have a PowerPoint that Ashley will get up that was included in your agenda item. What I'm passing out now is just some more throw and detailed explanations of the new changes to the Brown Act that have come into place starting January 1st, 2023. I, I'll try to do this more regularly is as there's some significant changes to law, we will give updates. There has not been that much changes to the law in the vast several years related to the Brown Act. But there are that some come up, and so I just want to make sure you're aware of them and can utilize some of the benefits that these have given to us. And I don't know if Ashley, if you're finding it? Oh, take your time. And if you want, I can come sit there and change.
Yep. I had it downloaded on the other computer, so I got to open it up in here. I don't want to go.
You don't mind me sitting so I can do the, the changes without making Ashley have to, to hear me say change every two seconds? But I don't know what you're. Does that work? It's not working on this. Oh, there we go. Okay, the first one that came around is in regards to remote meetings. When COVID came into effect, a lot of the rules related to remote meetings for the Brown Act were kind of thrown up in the air. And there was, I think we've been through three or four iterations of them and how they're going to look. As we've now settled down, they have made some formal rules regarding remote meetings, which I think will be very beneficial going forward. And what it allows is that in the past, if you were to do a remote meeting, you would have to put it on the agenda where the individual was going to be located. You were also going to have to put the, the agenda outside that location for a period of 72 hours before the meeting or 24 hours for a special meeting. That has gone away. Board members are now allowed to appear remotely without identifying their location, without allowing individuals into that location, without opposing the agenda for two different circumstances. The first one being just cause and the second one being emergency situations. Of course, they've defined those exactly what they mean. And just cause has four reasons for which you can utilize this. First is again, if you have a childcare or caregiving need for a sick family member, if you have a contagious illness, and this doesn't just include COVID, it includes anything that's potentially contagious. So if you have a really bad cold or flu, or there's something else that comes down the line, it qualifies. If you personally have a physical or mental disability, you can't drive, something else would occur. Dan is laughing, so he's probably thinking of everything it could be. And the last one is if you are traveling to an out of county location for county business. So if you're attending, for example, an RCRC meeting or you're attending a CSAC meeting, you can appear remotely for those without having to again, agendize it or notify of it. If you have private business that you're attending for, it does not qualify. An emergency situation is if you have a physical or medical emergency that prevents you from attending in person. So that's kind of a more broad definition. And that one is, is, has a few more benefits to it, so we'll talk about that in a second. So if you are going to utilize this for just cause, you have to notify the, the chair of the board and the clerk of the board as soon as possible. And that does not mean it has to be done before the meeting started, it can actually be done after the meeting has started, but as soon as you possibly can. And you have to give a general description of what, of one of the four reasons you're utilizing. So I, I have to say home due to childcare issues. You do not have to reveal personal information, you don't have to reveal the name of your child. You just have to give a broad and general description of which of the four classifications you're utilizing. The key, the, the trick to this is that you can only use it, each board member can only use it two times per calendar year. So if you have, you've already taken two trips to RCRC and utilized it, you can't then utilize it for a third time. It's a little bit different for emergency situations. Again, you can, if you have an emergency situation, you don't have to have advanced notice. But this one, the board has to approve it. So you have, if you call in and say, I have an emergency situation based on the fact that I'm in the hospital, the, the board must say, we will do a motion to approve as emergency situation that you can appear remotely. The first one, the board doesn't have a choice, you have to be allowed to appear remotely if the system's in place to do so. This one, the board has to approve. And then you have to again, provide the public with a general description of what, what issue is going on. But we, again, we don't want you to provide any personal medical information, we don't want to provide any, any family information. And we're happy from the staff level to help you construct those words to get it out there. But again, a medical emergency is something of that is sufficient. A medical emergency where I'm stuck out of county, even better. But you don't need to say what the medical issue is. So there's additional rules to it. Members participating remotely must have audio and visual. A lot of counties still aren't up with a Zoom room like we have in Trinity County, which makes this very difficult. But you have the perfect system for it, so you are all set up. The public again, must have the ability to see and address that board member who's not here, which the Zoom room allows. The legislative body must provide how the public can access it, it's already on your agenda. So again, you're set up for success on this one. You again, have it all put on the internet-based option, is all available and on the website, it's available on the agendas. You cannot require people to submit their public comment beforehand. They have to have the ability to have that live interaction. And if there's a disruption in the broadband or anything that means that the website goes down, you have to stop your meeting. You cannot continue, even though you have a quorum left in the room. Once you start down that road, you have to finish that meeting with everybody present.
Is there a timeframe on that? Like say our internet goes down, we mess around with it for 40 minutes. Do we say that's enough, we're out? Is there, how long do we keep going before we realize that it's not going to work?
It's pleasure of the chair. It really has no definite answer. I've had situations where people have done it for over an hour because they know it's going to be restored. They've been told by AT&amp;T, it's coming back. Typically, again, we'll do our best to work with the clerk to post that on YouTube or some other mechanism, do you think that available to the public? But you can continue to going until 12 o'clock midnight. Typically, again, we'll do our best to work with the clerk to post that on YouTube or some other mechanism to make that available to the public, but you can continue to going until 12 o'clock midnight. And again, we, the other remainder of the rules are the legislative body must be able to take reasonable accommodations. This is language that should go on all agendas. It basically says, if you need a reasonable accommodation to attend a meeting, here's how you contact the clerk to get that. The difference between just cause and emergency situations is that for emergency situations, you can do it for a period of three consecutive months or 20% of the regular meetings. So you can use it a lot longer. That again, allows for recovery or medical situations that take out a lot longer. And the last one is that if you are appearing remotely and there is anyone else in your room, for example, you have, you're in a hospital room and you are sharing a hospital room, you have to identify anyone over the age of 18 who is present with you and their relationship to you. So for example, if they're your family member or if they're a guest, you don't have to again, identify them by name. You just have to identify a relationship with them. Any questions on that new and exciting rule?
You mentioned at one point that there's some language that needs to go on our agenda. You'll make sure that gets there.
It already is. As I said, this county is, in preparing for this, I was able to look through everything that's done and you are actually one of the best prepared counties for the remote system. And I think that is a lot of, I know you built this whole system with the ARPA funding and you've got everything up to speed and advance and preparation. So we're ready to go. If any board member needs it for the next meeting, I would feel comfortable saying you're ready. Okay, so the next one has to do with supplemental material. So example, the document I just provided you. It was not put on the agenda. And again, this is a public document. It's, I have copies of it available. The, my, my PowerPoint, which is the document we're relying on is on the agenda. But let's say there is a situation where there's material that needs to come up that wasn't there already at the time of the posting agenda. Traditionally, what had occurred is that individuals would have then, once they, the clerk, once they received the, the documentation, they would put it online and they would post it in public locations as soon as they got it, whether it be, you know, 48 hours, 24 hours or right before the meeting. And then they'd make it available and distribute it. So of course, thanks to the California, there was a case that came out of the District Court of Appeals that said, that's not enough. If you are going to make it available, you have to make it available for them at any time to view. So what was happening was that folks would have it, their places of posting would be inside of a a public building that was locked at night. And the court was saying, no, you got to keep that, that door open 24 hours so that people have this access because they need to have access the moment it's available till the meeting. And so the Brown Act was modified to kind of give us better structure and understanding. So if we receive material less than 72 hours after the meeting, we can post it online immediately when we receive it. But we are not again, required to post it physically until immediately, immediately after the business opens, our doors open, as long as it's not within 24 hours. So again, we post it online and immediately, and then we make it available publicly at all locations within 24 hours prior to the meeting, once our designated office is open. So it's just a little bit of a, a help with us and more than anything, it gives guidance to the clerk on how to handle it. So she will know that if something comes in late, that she posts it online immediately and then she posts it in her, our normal place of posting, which us are outside of the, the county building and a couple of other locations such as the library. She posts that immediately after the, during regular business hours of the designated location. Any questions on that? Oh, yes.
Ashley, use the microphone.
Today I'm going to go back and put this online like I normally do. And then I have to post this in the lockbox out front?
So no, this is just prior to the meeting. So if it's avail, if it's provided at the meeting, your same procedure takes place. This is just if information is given late, which we do have happen quite frequently.
I have a question that's not specifically related to that, but it is about materials. So I, I referenced earlier today about having worked on a survey and a proposed onboarding process for new supervisors.
Yes.
I think that would be valuable to get to all of the supervisors because they might have input for leady or HR department or so forth. But I didn't want to agendize it and make it a whole thing. So what is the right process for that to happen?
So what I appreciate you doing is being concerned about serial meetings. You reach out to the supervisors and you ask them for input. They give it to you. All of a sudden, you've had multiple board members give you your opinion. And which then would be having a meeting outside of the meeting. The, the thing to remember is that staff is not governed under the Brown Act. So we can and should reach out to every single one of the board members and ask your opinions and direction for how we're going to proceed forward. We cannot tell you what another board member said, but we can say, I'm providing you this document. Please provide your input back to your interim CAO Garza, who can then compile that and make that present that publicly. So the mechanism to get that feedback from your other board members is through staff.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that.
Correct. That's the best. The clerk as well, if you have a document, let's say you go to a training or you go to a conference and you get some really good information. The tech, the, the procedure we utilize is we provide that to the clerk of the board who then sends it to all board members under BCC. Again, staff is here to help you make sure that you get all the information you received.
And, and I think related, there have been emails that have come in where folks want to let us know something and they're trying to email each of us individually. And it's been obvious lately because a couple of email addresses were not known. And so then they'll send something and say, could you please forward this to the other board members? And, and so do we have on our webpage where our email addresses are that they can just send it to clerkoftheboard@trinitycounty.org and avoid that? That's question one. And number two, is it a problem?
Question number one is a wonderful idea. That is, that is typically our recommendation is that if individuals want to access every board member, they do through to the clerk of the board. One, it creates a record because again, everything that's provided is public record. So having essential, you know, folks, someone who can, can gather that information is appropriate. Is it a problem? No, you're not exchanging ideas, but it can create a problem because it can foster a conversation to occur without even knowing it. So again, our recommendation is to go through staff to distribute stuff to your fellow board members. And to also, if you are, if you are receiving something from a fellow board member, remember, do not reply because you don't know if they've talked to another board member about it.
And so just as a pause, can we make sure that our clerk of the board address is really prominent for people to know?
Yes, we're updating that.
Okay, great.
I've also had a conversation with County Council Mark Long on emails because I have been noticing department heads or outside the public, they are emailing all of you all at once, not blind copying you. And the instruction is that all of you should be blind copy. So I will be informing all the department heads to follow that format, not to be sending to all of you. It would be like myself, I send it to myself and then I blind copy each one of you.
Yeah, it is recommended that when folks are sending out that they send it to CAO Garza, myself and clerk of the board with you, BCC. If it's confidential, you can just go to one of the third parties, but you know, to make sure that's all BCC. So that is a very good point.
And one thing related to what Chair Cox just said is I did have someone reach out to me this week saying, I just looked at the website and it still shows the previous supervisors on the webpage and so it would have their information. And so the sooner we can get that, I know we're still waiting probably on a group photo and all those sorts of things, but at least we could get that changed so that they know who are the supervisors and how to contact them.
The next one again is another, I like to call it a COVID-related item. There has been a significant increase in the disruptions that we see in board meetings, up to including violence in some board meetings. And so they finally put together a, some guidance for us on how to handle this disruptive behavior in the meeting. The process is very simple, is that the Chair should warn the individual that they must cease that behavior or it will result in their removal. And then if it does not cease, they have the ability to request that they be removed. Typically, again, we would utilize law enforcement for that. If they don't voluntarily leave, I would not ask the, the Chair to have to go wrangle somebody out of a room, although I, I think she could do it just fine. So the, the key to this is that we have to make sure we're not excluding people for participating in the meeting in a proper way. Meaning folks have a right to say, to criticize government. They have the right to say what they want. They have the right to even at times use language that's forceful or aggressive. They do not have the right to threaten force. They do not have the ability to impede or disrupt our business. And they do not have the ability to do anything that would prevent our meeting from moving forward. The example I always like to use is that there is a case, a city council meeting where an individual came because her garbage wasn't being picked up. And she proceeded to, for her three minutes, explain to the board in harsh and graphic terms why what they did in not having garbage pickup was horrible and what should happen to them because they weren't doing that. She then proceeded to take bags of garbage that had been sitting at her house and spread them all along the floor around the city council table. Ultimately, she was kicked out before her three minutes were up and she sued that jurisdiction. The court came back and said, you cannot kick her out for what she said. She has the right to complain. She has the right to tell you, you're doing a horrible job. And she has the right to tell you that she is going to, you know, recall you or whatever she wants to do. The court did find that they were appropriate in kicking her out because by spreading the garbage, she impeded their ability to have safe access, exit and safe and have the ability for people to come and make public comment. So that impeded the ability for the meeting to continue. So again, we have to be very careful that we don't inhibit people's ability to talk, but we do need the meeting to be able to move forward. And again, no threats of violence should be allowed in any meeting. Again, this, the point just making, they can criticize us, but they can't threaten us. Okay, any questions on that one? One change that I'm going to continue to talk about that is actually a year old, but I like to bring it up as a reminder because as we move forward in the world, our social media presence seems to get more and more. And we forget, or we don't know that social media has the ability of creating what we call a serial meeting just by the fact that it exists. You are not as board members prohibited from engaging in social media. You have the ability to access your constituents through that process. The purpose of you accessing your constituents is to provide answers to questions and to obtain information from the public. Those are the two reasons you can and should use social media. But when another member of your board reads one of your items and therefore knows your opinion on something, that is where we have a problem. So a majority of the members of the legislative body do not, are not allowed to discuss anything on social media. And we think that means comment, but it doesn't. It means like, it means thumbs up, it means star, whatever the social media tool is. If you see another post from another member of the board, do not comment on it regardless of what content it is. And the example I give of this is that I had a jurisdiction where there was flooding and one of the board members posted information for the public to be aware that to avoid these roads. And two other board members commented on it. One said, thank you. One gave it a thumbs up. That is technically a Brown Act violation because again, we have a multiple board members talking on an item within the jurisdiction of the, the agency on a social media platform. The other example I give is one of my board members in Modoc County had a beautiful, wonderful baby that was just born and everybody brought wonderful comments about how adorable this baby was online. That is not a Brown Act violation because as adorable as this baby was, she's not within the jurisdiction of the board. So again, we're talking, only thing, only thing we're talking about is related to county business. You maintain, you are allowed to maintain friendships outside of, of this and can use social media. So that's just kind of a good reminder for everybody in terms of using social media. And again, I will remind you of this every time I get the chance. Oh, of course.
I have a question. Sorry. I just, well, maybe you're gonna. So I would like to maybe make a Facebook page that's for like my district. So that not everyone has to be friends of my like personal Facebook page or on Instagram. Is that something that we're allowed to do? Like, can I call it like District Four or something? Or is that not okay?
You are allowed to use social media to provide information to the public and obtain information from the public. So yes. What we will caution you on, and I believe we do have a social media policy, so we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Yeah.
But what we do caution you about is that if you, you are at times sitting in the capacity as a quasi-legislative body, meaning you're acting as the judge. If you're hearing appeals, if you're hearing matters where people have rights that you're determining. So if you post on your agenda a preconceived opinion on the results of anything that's going to come before you, you potentially are going to have to recuse. So again, I would make sure we always remember to keep it strictly to information that helps the public or receiving information from the public that will help you making decisions.
Yes. Thinking like just, you know, topics to be aware of or something that we've already talked about, so.
Absolutely can do that. And then I would caution the other board members to be very careful about reading it. I'm sure it's going to be wonderful, but.
I don't care. I know, I want people to know what's going on and you have to communicate with them where they're at, so.
We're going to move on with our lesson.
I do believe that I've seen some things on social media that I wish I could unsee, so I, I don't disagree. But there are, you know, there are some benefits to social media. And so again, I'm not here to tell you not to use it. That's for your personal decisions. I'm here to just give you caution. The thing I will warn you every time I see you on anything related to any one of your, your tools, gadgets or platforms that you utilize as a board of supervisors is we've got the San Jose case that came out in 2017 that says anytime you're using your personal devices for county business, they are subject to Public Records Act requests. So if you are starting to text people on your personal phone and we get a Public Record Act request, I'm going to have the unfortunate and somewhat awkward position of having to ask you to hand over your phone so I can download and take off all the potential public records off your phone. So try to keep your personal and your public separate. So creating a separate Facebook account is not a bad idea, but that is subject to public records. And so make sure you do not erase things, get rid of things, make sure you preserve them in a manner which if anyone asks for it, we can obtain it.
Comment on the social media. So I have actually been using the platform to share information and I will make sure that everyone knows.
One moment. We need to not talk off.
I just want to make sure everyone knows that there are half dozen community-focused pages, groups that are out there. And all of those administrators have agreed that if you send them something that's county-related to their email address, they'll post it for you. And then it doesn't even have to come from you. So it was just an easy way for us to get the information out to people. As it is, I had been posting and then I would post to each of these groups and I'd continue to do that. But they also agreed that if you just send them an email and I have that email distribution list, they will post it on your behalf as long as it's county information that's of interest because they're not going to post everybody's information. So I can, happy to share that through.
That's very good, very good advice. And again, my caution on that would be if you like something that's posted publicly and two of your fellow board members also like something posted publicly, you'll have a Brown Act violation. If you read it and observe it and say nothing, it doesn't violate the new rules.
Thanks.
Okay, so there is one thing I know, I, this is a Brown Act, but there is one law that just came down that I just want to briefly touch on. It's not Brown Act related, but it is important because it does change the rules related to contributions, campaign contributions. So the, the mechanism for determining whether you have a conflict based on campaign contributions used to not apply to board members, it now applies to board members. So what this means that is if you have received amount of $250 or more from an individual for the 12 months, sorry, for the, prior to an item coming before the board or 12 months after the item has come from the board, you have a, you have a conflict and you cannot hear that item. Oops, it went backwards. What you have to do is exactly what we saw today, which is you disclose and you recuse it. You, all you have to say is I have a conflict based on receiving a contribution. And you cannot participate it. There is an exception. If you realize, oh wait, I shouldn't have taken that contribution because I want to participate in this, you can return the money within 30 days and you can continue to hear the item going forward. The party who gives you the money also has obligation of, of making sure they don't give you money before they have, of a known item coming before you or 12 months after. And that is something that they need to make sure that they have responsibility for as well. If there's a violation of this, it's covered under the FPPC as all campaign contribution finances are, and they have fines and fees that are associated with it, but they do have a cure clause, which is wonderful. So if you've made a mistake and you realize you have, you return the money within 30 days, 14 days of acceptance and you agree not to do it again and you're able to move forward. So it's just something to be aware of if that you are, are you, if you're in campaign season and you are receiving contributions, make sure you keep a good and accurate record of who's contributing and cross-reference on your agendas to see if they're coming in asking for anything, permits, any fee waivers, anything of that nature before we come into the board meeting. And if you have any questions, we can reach out to the FPPC and make sure that we do it right. But again, I always say this and I say it, if you have, if when in doubt, walk out. If, when, when you have a doubt about it, walk out of the room. It's better to be safer than sorryer because obviously if you make a mistake on it, it has bigger implications for you personally, but for the county as well as we have to withdraw or with recuse or redo any matters that were heard before you under the conflict. Okay, that's just my brief update. And I believe there was a request for a brief update on some of the Rosenboll Rules of Order and I'll try to get that in the next couple of months, just to a brief update on that. But if you have any But if you have any topics you want updates on or any topics, new law that comes down that you want me to address, just feel free to let me know.
Perfect. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you very much. How you contain all of that in your noggin is amazing.
All right, item 3.5, human resources. Take the following actions to hire an extra help building inspector III in the building department. Number one, pursuant to government code section 7522.56 and 212218, adopt a resolution. Excuse me, hiring. Pardon me. Hire, authorizing the hiring of a retired annuitant as an extra help building inspector III, waiving CalPERS 180 day wait period. And number two, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.410, authorize hiring employing ID number 00870 as an extra help building inspector III at range M236, step G, effective January 18, 2023. $41.76 per hour for actual hours worked plus applicable payroll taxes and unemployment insurance, CIO Garza.
Okay. Our, our last building inspector III, as referenced here, retired December 31st from our county. And as you may know, we do not have a certified building inspector to approve plan checks. And as it was reported at the last board meeting, we have quite a few on hold until those can get completed. So this is a requirement from CalPERS is that we adopt a resolution that allows the, the retired annuitant to come back before the 180 days so that he can perform this duty while we are, we are doing an active recruitment. So it'll be for that interim while we are doing a recruitment. And he is available to do this and we appreciate him being willing to come back and take care of us.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of board members? All right, there is no public in the room to comment. Is there any public comment online?
I have no raised hands.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve as submitted.
I will second.
Right. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Great, we have a meeting addendum now before we go back into closed session. Sheriff's Department, approve amendment number two to the agreement with Inmate Calling Solutions LLC. Doing businesses IC Solutions or ICS, increasing the maximum cost by $4,800 per fiscal year and updating Exhibit B to provide access to the Case Maker Law Library Service on the Bridge Tablets. Increase of $4,800 per fiscal year from the sheriff's budget. Sheriff Saxon, are you online? Jill, are you available to speak?
I am, can you hear me?
Great. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So this item, back in April of 2022, when we were preparing for the move to the new jail, we did the First Amendment for IC Solutions. Within that amendment, it included access to the law library. What we were under the impression of was that was going to give the inmates access on the tablets to the law library. In reality, what happened was that was basically, they were giving us an interface.
So Jill, I'm gonna interrupt you because the conversation in the background is now audibly understandable. So we might want to mitigate that.
Okay, sorry, we're have both having two Zoom meetings at the same time. I think we're gonna take care of that. Okay, sorry about that. So initially, back in April of 2022, we had done amendment number one to IC Solutions. One of the items within that amendment was they were giving us access to the county's law library. Our understanding of that was that that would give the inmates the ability to access the law library on the tablets. In reality, what we just found out, I believe it was last week or the week before, was that was basically an interface. It wasn't access to the application. So this Second Amendment will give them access to the application of Case Maker Law Library Service, which is something that we are required to provide to them based on Title 15.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of board members?
Sorry, there is one other thing.
Oh, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
So I had initially submitted the amendment as it was $400 per month, which would be 4,800 per fiscal year. In talking with the company, they lowered that to 300 per month. So it's 3,600 per fiscal year. And I do have the updated amendment with me that I can email to the CIO's office. And I apologize for that not being updated before now.
Okay, not a problem, thank you. Right, now any questions of board members? No? All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no chat, no raised hands.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I, I move to approve as presented by Jill with a revised number.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All right. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler? Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, with that, we are going to move back into closed session. Having already read all of these items, I don't believe I need to do so again. And we will adjourn the January 18th Board of Supervisors meeting at 2:16.